The Drama Department. I'm so impressed with the commitment of these students to drama. I'll tell you, board members, that their commitment to drama is as strong or stronger than other students' commitment to extracurricular activities from sports to band to FFA. It doesn't matter. I've seen that, that the love that they have for this group is as strong or stronger than students have in even sports. So I commend them. I've asked Miss Neander from Citrus High School to come. If you could please come to the podium and she's gonna tell them about the group. We're gonna recognize you all later in the program, but with that, we're gonna have a little bit of a treat here.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. I'm thrilled today. We're going to be presenting an excerpt from our Competition One Act Law Dispute. It's an 18th-century French play that deals with what if you never knew the person you were meant to be in love with and you never met them until the time was right. And these two individuals in the play, Chase Davis plays Egley and Hunter Helton plays Azor, and their entire lives, they have only seen two other humans, these two old raggedy women who have literally raised them. They've never seen a species of the opposite sex and they've never felt what love truly is. So this is just a small excerpt from our competition piece that we performed at the state festival.
I can't open the box, Azor. Why don't you try? Karis said to push this button.
There. But I only see myself in there. Yes, it's the same face I saw on the screen.
Let me see. No, you're wrong. It's me. It's your beautiful Egley, exactly as she is. Come and see for yourself.
You're right, it is you. No? Wait. There's two of us in there. Half you and half me. Oh, I prefer just the you in there. I can't see as much of you when I'm in there as well.
No, I like a little of you in there as well. You don't spoil anything, I assure you. Come a little closer. Stay still.
Our faces look as if they're about to touch in there. Now that you aren't touching, my happiness will my face.
I can feel your face and I like it.
What if our mouths were to move a little closer?
Look, you've disturbed us in there and now I can only see myself again. This mirror is an admirable invention.
And so is the portrait. I must kiss it again.
Azor, do you think Karis and Meswir are good people?
Yes, and they wish us the very best. I wondered if you'd talk to me about the advice they gave us, or...
About separation?
Yes, I would.
Yes, I was thinking about that as well.
I'm not as far worried as I deserve, but I don't want you to become more than me. I'd be devastated if that ever happened.
Yes, but you must also take care of yourself. You must never tire of adoring me. I know I am beautiful, but you're fierce and afraid to frighten me.
You didn't mean to be afraid, Egley. What are you thinking about now?
I've taken everything into consideration and come to a conclusion. We must agree to cause ourselves some pain and separate for two hours. Your heart and its admiration may mean more to me than your presence, though I do like your presence a lot.
Secondly? Us?
Yes. Azor, we must part immediately, or he'll no longer wish to separate from you.
At last. I don't know if I have the strength.
And I'm not using lying. Azor, are you crying? Stay there, as long as there's no danger.
But you said there was a danger.
Then go.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, God.
Last, he's just gone. He'll already suffer. Thank you.
All right, next, I've asked Paul Giulio from the Calgary Chapel to come and open us up in a word of prayer, and he also sings the National Anthem. Mrs. Powers was with me at the National Day of Prayer at City of Embarness this week, and we got to hear him sing the National Anthem. And so I'd ask him to come today to open up in prayer, and then as soon as the prayer's finished, if we'd all stand for the National Anthem.
First of all, I want to say thank you Superintendent Hemel and to the board for having me, inviting me today. I very much appreciate that. Will you bow and pray with me? Lord, we're meeting today to conduct very important matters, so we ask for your blessing on the Citrus County Board, School Board, Father, and its family of schools. We ask for your help to continue to build a network of schools for Citrus County that supports the development of each individual child, that offers a work environment suitable for all staff, and provides a focus for our local community. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all gifts, and we thank you for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, for your blessing upon all our staff members, both teaching and support members. Be with our school board and their deliberations and help them to be wise in their decisions. Give them insight to lead with integrity and let their determinations reflect what is best for all of our students. Guide them so that we might be united in the spirit of mutual respect and exchange of ideas and goals, not as individual entities, but as the community we strive to be. And in our discussions, let us never forget for whom we do this: our children. And lastly, as we come to the close of this school year, we ask for your hand of protection and guidance upon every student in our school district. Bless their summer with fun, friendship, and refreshing, and bring them all back in the coming school year with an insatiable appetite for learning. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please stand and join me as we sing our National Anthem? Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please get ready for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. That was quite excellent. And in ten minutes, yes. Okay. We've got a couple things to add. And then you can do that. We need to add to accept the grant valued at $835 to Forest Ridge Elementary School from the Music Theater International Productions for the Disney, Disney's The Lion King Kids. And number two, we need to approve the interlocal agreement, the city solid waste and disposal collection between the City of Crystal River and Citrus County School Board, and I will place these on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, could we discuss the interlocal agreement? I'd like to pull that forward discussion.
Okay. You can do that. Or we're gonna put it. Let's put it under School Support Services, under Community Services. We'll put number two. City of Crystal River. Okay? You're welcome. And with that, Ms. Powers. Okay, do we have a motion or do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Do we have any citizen comments? Alrighty. Okay. Mr. Bradshaw.
I reviewed the portion that talks about asking whether dogs paid or not. I don't believe I would give you that, otherwise it's the exact same document that came out of the workshop.
Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Aye.
We have a motion by Mr. Kendy, a second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Recognition of donations. I know we have some.
Yes, generous donations. The first donation that we have is the one that we just accepted under adoption of the agenda, and that was for the grant valued at $835 to Forest Ridge Elementary School from the Music Theater International Productions for Disney's The Lion King Kids. A $1,000 donation.
Ms. Roderaman, it's not coming on.
No, I don't think it's on.
I don't think it's on. Dr. Geddes is coming to your aid.
Yeah.
$1,000 donation to Citrus High School from B&amp;L Enterprises in Citrus County due to business at Point of Light Golf Club. Proven $2,500 donation to Citrus High School from Soddy Fishing Gear. Proven $500 donation to Citrus High School from Jeff Webb. $2,000 donation to La Canto High School from Soddy Fishing Gear. $28,000 donation to La Canto High School from Soddy Fishing Gear. $5,000 donation to La Canto High School from Leon McClellan. $1,100 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from Captain George Capitan, and a $2,500 donation from Captain Robert Rosna. $750 donation to Marine Science Station from the Ponds Club of Embarness for Coastal Kings and Citrus Scholarships. $600 donation to Marine Science Station from the City of Crystal River. $1,000 donation to Marine Science Station from the Lurie Club of Homosassa Springs. $4,600 donation to Crest from IRRU. $500 donation to Crest for our classroom from William and Judy Tana. $500 donation to Crest for playground from William and Judy Tana.
Thank you. And the first one that I read was $835 to Forest Ridge Elementary School from the Music Theater International Production for the Disney's The Lion King Kids. Thank you, sir. That's a place over in Crystal River.
It's a mullet.
You didn't come over. You didn't come join us over there.
I can explain it.
Yes, and I know that they sponsor that fishing tournament that raised that large money, $20,000, for that tournament, for the fishing. Yeah, yes, they have done a lot.
And Golden Citrus. Yeah, upstairs, Mom.
They've been very generous.
Okay, we're gonna recognize the Homosassa Guides Association, Mr. Bayes. Go to the podium, explain what we've been doing all these years.
Well, first of all, we're from the Homosassa Guides Association, and we have a check for the Marine Science Station for a $200 donation.
All right.
I think it would be appropriate if Mr. Hebert would come up here. He's the one that really took a chance on me and helped us explain what we do. In 2009, when I started to work at Homosassa, I went to Mr. Hebert, he was the principal there, and asked him about a field trip, a fishing field trip, playing hooky. This is one of our first annual bags that all the kids and the guides got, and we've been going ever since. So it is since 2009, we've just finished our eighth year taking the kids on a field trip. It's the entire fifth grade, and they go out with the guides, and we have anywhere from 12 to 15 guides that take these kids out on a fishing trip. And it's not just fishing. It is an educational, fun, educational experience where they learn over 20 standards at the time in all different categories, mainly science. And because of this, the outstanding work that the guides do with the kids, the science scores along with the teachers there at Homosassa have been tops in the states for several years. But I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hebert, because he has a really cool story, and I just hope for him to, whenever I brought it to his attention. This is William Tony and Kissy Tony, Eric Tony. William Tony is one of our guides as well. But, Mr. Hebert, would you like to say a couple things?
Hello, Kissy, welcome. Kissy's retired, worked for me for several years at Homosassa. I will tell you, when Mike came to me to talk about the trip, I thought to myself, this is ridiculous, he's never going to get the funding for this, and I can't believe I'm gonna send kids out on a boat privately without any other things. And so we talked through all the processes, went through all the paperwork, need to be done, and I really did not think Mike would be able to get the support from the community. But the Homosassa community was very supportive of the students and the work that we've done, and it has continued on even after, you know, I've left the school. Mr. Bossy was there as principal, and now Mrs. Harrell is there as principal, and the program has continued. So many, many students have benefited from the work that Mike had, with the vision he had to help support. And again, he is correct with the scores, and Homosassa Elementary have done very, very well, and I think it's a direct result of the work he's done to help support students. So thank you, Mr. Bayes, and the fishing guides for that.
Something that's interesting to see is those kids, when they get on the boat, we have a digital scale, and we've got a tape measure. And one of the things they gotta do is figure out how long the fish is and how much it weighs. So they catch a little micro snapper about this big, and we say, how big is? Those little kids all look at it. One little, it's 24 inches. And another one, you know, it's 10 inches. And they have no idea till they take that tape measure and hold it up there. The hands-on, that little fish will weigh anywhere between five pounds and two ounces. You know, the answers they give, once they start weighing it, then they do the hands-on, and they understand now. We talk to them and say, how many ounces is a pound? See, the wheel's going, six, 10, you know, but the fish weighed like four and a half ounces. You know, so it's interesting to see how it weighs.
We wanted to recognize the Homosassa Guides Association today, because we talk about community involvement, things that people do out of our community that makes us a better district than many districts in the state. And we just wanted to say, on behalf of the school district, myself, the school board, thank you for truly making a difference in our kids. Thank you. Next, we have recognition of Citrus High School's Band, Saxophone Quartet State Winners. All right.
We'll do all of our groups?
Sure.
Okay. So, thank you to the board, to Ms. Hemel, and to all of you for having us here tonight. I'm very proud of this very talented group of young people. We will start with our band. All of the groups that we shared tonight have received a superior rating at the state level.
Wow.
So, starting with Band, which is under the direction of Mr. Joshua Tavana. Mr. Tavana, if you would come up. If you will stay up until we call all of your names for your group, then we'll get a group picture. So the Saxophone Quartet, we have Rhianne Albert, Jaden Anna Cletto, Michael D. Fiore, and Casey Hux.
This is better, too.
Congratulations. All right, very good.
Next on the agenda is recognition of the Citrus High School Chorus Solo and Ensemble State Winners.
Chorus is under the direction of Mr. John Adele, and as we move on to this group, I'd like to introduce our Chorus President, Mary Hux. Mary Hux recently been accepted on a Silver Pegasus Scholarship to attend University of Central Florida, so we're very excited for her. She received a superior rating this year at the state level in four categories: her vocal solo, classical vocal duet, as a member of Category Five, and as a member of Breeze as well. So Mary is going to introduce the members of Chorus that are actually here this evening in lieu of time. So, Mary.
Thank you. We have not as many people can make it as we wanted to due to conflicting schedules and stuff. So first, I just want to introduce our Breeze kids. Some of our singers are Riley Smith, I'm sorry if you look through the crowd, Hannah Russo, myself, and I believe that's all singers from Breeze. Yes. And then both of our guitarists are here, Zane Mueller and Kyle Manning are both here. They were our companyists, they were our guitar players. Our drummer was Andrew Hill, and one of our pianists, Anna Savoy, is here. So these are all just a few of the members we had.
You tall people can get back. I will. Do we need to squish anymore?
And I'd also like to bring up Category Five, which was our female acapella group, and some other singers that are here today. Unfortunately, once again, not everyone was able to be here. Riley Smith, Hannah Russo, myself, Madison Switek, Ashlyn Bennett, and I believe that is all that was able to make it for today. And then, last but not least, the solos and duets. Obviously, my solo, Miss Mason, very thankfully, announced. Desiree Johnson received a superior on her solo after she was able to perform at state and received an excellent. Gavin Jalinas received a superior, and so did Bella and I's duet, which was very amazing. So very proud of our Chorus Department this year for all their awards.
Okay, next on the agenda is the recognition of Citrus High School Drama One Act State Winners.
Our Drama Department is under the direction of Ms. Kristen Neander. And we have several students that received a technical design for the One Act Law Dispute: Chase Davis, Hunter Helton. Hold the applause, because there's a line. So Chase Davis, Hunter Helton, Natalie Dodd, Kyle Manning, Isley Din, Hannah Russo, Kevin Flaherty, Hannah Lemus, Madison Taylor, Brandon Rash, Jada Davis, Austin Russell, Sidney Hale, Reggie Nelson, Rachel Lopez, Webby Holder, Bella Hux, Amy Kennedy, Chloe Neander, Madison Pennsinger, and Riley Smith. Congratulations. Are we good? If we could have Chase, Chloe, Natalie, and Hunter stay up for just a moment.
You know, while they're going back, Ms. Hux, could you say what you just said to us back here a second ago about these names?
Oh, while we were at your senior wards, I said, I'm recognizing a lot of names. I saw Emily at Take Stock in Children last night, and so I'm recognizing names that went across the strays with a lot of scholarship money.
Pretty amazing, yes?
Very amazing.
Young people.
So in addition to the technical design, superior rating, Chase Davis received a superior rating in playwriting. Chloe Neander for costume design, and Chloe was also the alternate, which is kind of like second place in state for the Critics' Choice Award. Natalie Dodd for her solo musical. And Hunter Helton for his monologue. Congratulations and thank you for having us.
Oh, that's the, yes, that's the recognition. Thank you all for coming.
Gladly somebody recognized us.
Thank you, good to see you.
Hannah, what about Tampa Bay? Okay.
We have the key boarder of the Tampa Bay Area Regional Transportation Authority. They had met with Mr. Bishop, Mr. Hebert, myself, with a proposed offer for the school board to consider, and I'll let them... And I'll let them talk to you about it. It involves a parent pickup and trying to reduce some congestion around some schools.
That's just perfect, Mike. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for having us here today. I've got a presentation that I'm waiting for you to hear. I'm gonna get mine. Yeah, I can get one. You have some print copies of the presentation in front of you. While I'm waiting for this to boot up, let me introduce myself. My name is Michael Case. I'm the Principal Planner for the Tampa Bay Area Regional Transportation Authority. If you're not familiar with TBARDA, just a quick five-point introduction here. We were created by the Florida Legislature in 2007 to develop a regional long-range transportation plan for the five-county area that makes up FDOT District Seven. So, that's Citrus, Hernando, Pasco, Pinellas, and Hillsborough Counties. I'm gonna talk a little bit about a program, a new partnership, that we are funded through FDOT to provide to the five counties. It's a public-private partnership related to school transportation and some technical matters that when I'm done with my part, I'm gonna introduce the CEO and founder of a mobile application company started here in Tampa Bay, Pat Baba, who's gonna talk about the program and what the benefits potentially are to Citrus County schools. So, I went briefly through what TBARDA is, what we do, developing a regional long-range transportation plan for FDOT District Seven. Another part of our charge is something called the Commuter Assistance Program, which is a program focused on mitigating congestion, both around workplaces and around schools. So, what we do is facilitate carpooling and alternative transportation modes, including some things like tablet work, which includes people working from home. And for schools, walking school buses and bicycle trains. We are supported by the Safe Routes for School Transportation Program, which is a statewide program focused on getting kids to school, getting kids to and from school safely. So, a little bit about how our program works. It is completely 100% online. Parents register and they create a profile. In that profile, there's some criteria that we need in order to match them with other parents that are seeking alternative transportation options, such as carpool. I'll get into those in a second. But before I do, just to specifically cover, we do not share any information about the child or the child's location. So, privacy is a big issue with this program. And you'll see in our proposed partnership with Pick My Kid, how we plan to enhance security with the program as well. So, I covered, we don't share any information about the child. So, we use the parents' information and intersections to match parents together. As I mentioned, to carpool, form a bicycle train or a walking school bus to get to and from school. The latter two, of course, are contingent on whether or not they're close enough to school to be able to safely walk or bicycle. So, we would never encourage them, if they're beyond a mile, to walk or bike to and from school. So, some of the program benefits that we communicate to parents and schools, a reduction in the amount of trips to and from school, which reduces congestion, savings in terms of money as well for parents. If they're not using their personal vehicle, if their child's not taking the bus to get them to and from school each day, then they're technically saving on not only time, but wear and tear on their vehicle as well. For bicycle trains and walking school buses, there are safety in numbers. So, if we're in a group together, and like with a walking school bus, everybody hangs onto a rope together to make sure that they don't traverse off and get into trouble on their own. So, they stay safe with the group. And of course, there are environmental benefits as well. The less cars that we have on the road. Parents that are driving their kids just by themselves to school every single day, we're reducing on CO2, as well as those lengthy pickup and drop-off lines around schools. So, our program today has 66 schools total. Those are split between Hillsborough and Pinellas County currently. We have just over 2,000 parents that are registered in the program and participate in one of the three transportation options. I mentioned, carpool, walking school bus, or a bicycle train. So, why we're here today. We started a partnership with the Pick My Kid Mobile Application Company. Pat's gonna talk a little bit more about what they do in a second. This is funded through the Florida Department of Transportation. We are looking at 20 schools across the five counties that comprise District Seven. Out of those 20, we're looking to start with two schools in Citrus County. So, this is kind of a two-tiered approach to the program. We would like to bring both the TBARDA Regional School Commute Program, which I just covered, which is alternative transportation-focused, as well as Pick My Kid, which is a mobile dismissal application system that parents use their cellphones. Just about everybody has one nowadays. It automatically queues the pickup lines around the school to really make the process more efficient, taking up less time on the part of teachers, so they can spend more time in other things that are, not that they're more important, but other things that maybe they need to do that they have to be away from to facilitate this whole pickup-drop-off process.
How long have the other 66 schools been involved in the program?
This has been since 2004. So, we started in Pinellas County. We started with 15 schools, and it's grown over the past 12 years.
I mean, I just kind of did a little math on those figuring games. It's not very many parents are involved with it in our way.
Well, the reason for that is every single year, we start new with parents. Meaning that, I mean, you know, parents are changing schools. Kids are aging and they're starting to maybe drive for themselves after a while. So, rather than keep them in the system, we engage each school that's currently participating every single year so that we get as many true matches as possible. And they're not being matched with kids that are maybe no longer at the same school or have changed a grade. Does that make sense? This is focused, our program is focused on K through 10. Mostly middle school. So, old enough to walk or bicycle, but not old enough to drive. Is this the most rural community that you're, be looking to implement this in? We're looking at Hernando County as well. So, I guess I'm gonna say yes. Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna let you answer that. So, I covered what we're gonna do on our side of the program for Pick My Kid. Because there is a cost associated with the license fee of about $2,900 per year per school. As a pilot, to help communicate the benefits, we're looking to subsidize 100% of that first full year. This will also be a data-driven effort, meaning that we're going to be looking closely from implementation of the program throughout the school year to the end, what the benefits are in regards to, have we reduced the car line? Have we sped it up? Have parents maybe saw the benefit and decided to carpool the school together? Or maybe they feel a little bit safer walking or biking to school?
I have one question to you.
Sure.
You mentioned a benefit because the kids would use their cellphones as a locator for the parents, and it would free up time for the teachers at the drop-off and pickup site. Explain that, because I, we're there to supervise the children.
Right, right.
To supervise the children. So, how would that cellphone alleviate the use of the teacher?
I'm gonna leave that to Pat.
Okay.
That's his realm with the application. He's gonna go through everything and how it works. And then, I'm sure he'll be able to answer your question during the presentation as well. Yes, absolutely. He's got all those things prepared for you.
If you have questions, please answer them.
Yeah, and you know, I really appreciate your engagement. If you have questions, of course, ask them at any time. So, really quickly, we're gonna be focused on three core areas with this pilot, and that's safety, security, and speed. Safety, of course, being the most primary of importance. I mentioned a couple of things we'd be looking at, and that was vehicle occupancy counts, pedestrian and bicycle activity, the percentage of car line, bus riders and walkers by day, month, and year, car to student ratio, how many students have been dismissed over the course of a single hour. With all these, we hope to show a trend line of improvement throughout the year. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Pat. He's gonna talk about the Pick My Kid Mobile Application and exactly what it does and how it works.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. It's an honor to be here. My name is Pat Bauer. I'm the founder of a company called Pick My Kid. About just before I get into the nuts and bolts of what we do, I just want to give you a brief introduction and background about what I did and why I did it. So, I was a fighter pilot and a deep-sea diver in the Navy about 10 years ago. I got out, came to Tampa, built and sold about three different companies. And then, I told my wife, "I'm gonna take a year off and do nothing." It didn't last very long. A week later, my wife was, the least I could do is go pick up my daughter from school. That was my first exposure to car lines. And next thing I know, I was sitting in these car lines. It was prime Netflix time for me, and I'm wondering, "What am I doing here?" So, out of that frustration, I was desperate to find a solution so I can get back to Netflix and enjoy my time off. So, and then, I kind of dove into being grumpy and complaining about it, but I didn't do anything about it. Unless this one day, I was in the car line, I was on the phone, not really paying attention. As I was driving through, they put a kid in my car, I was driving out. And I look around, I'm looking at this excited kid sitting in the back. Only problem was, he was not my kid. So, that's when, you know, it kind of struck me that, you know, there has to be something done about it. And I looked at solutions, there was nothing available in the market. So, we went about finding a group of parents and teachers together to build a solution for my daughter's school, which really solved real-life problems for our teachers and principals in our daughter's school. And that's how it started. That was three years ago. Today, we are in 25 states. We have over 100,000 users and about, in three different countries outside the US. And we are right now starting to every major school district in the country because we provide a comprehensive safety platform for schools in a very cost-effective manner. With that background, I'll just jump into what we do. So, today's dismissal, so the core of this entire platform revolves around the dismissal process because that is a point in the school's day wherein it's most fluid. There's a lot of cars coming in, kids getting into cars, buses, 20 to 50 teachers outside with walkie-talkies and clipboards, trying to manage a very chaotic process. They don't have the right tools to manage it. And that's what we want to do with Pick My Kid, is make the system smarter, make it safer, and make it cheaper and more efficient for the school districts. By smarter, we allow parents to use their existing cellphones to attract the system, safer for our children. And also, we do not mandate schools to buy any additional piece of hardware. Our system works around whatever hardware you already have. So, there is no startup costs, so to speak. There are three basic components. If you look at the screen on the extreme left, what you see is a cellphone app. These are only required by parents and not by students, like the previous question was asked. So, students do not have to have any hardware. No RFID, no dot tags, no swipe cards, no barcodes, nothing. The parents download an app. And as for the last three years, every school we roll up, we have about 85% to 95% parent engagement in every school we roll up. And that's the level of parent engagement in the system. On the center, what you see is a dashboard application where, for the first time, the school administrators have a kind of a bird's-eye view of the entire dismissal process. They're able to see exactly where every child is at any time, who's getting into which car, which bus, which bus is running late. And they also have the ability to send out real-time notifications to parents through the portal. And on the extreme right, what you see is a tablet application, which the teachers in the frontline of the dismissal process are able to use to swipe children off as they're getting into cars and buses. What that does is also, it triggers an instant alert back to the parent regarding, hey, Johnny has got on bus number 45, or he's just walked home. So, it gives an instant alert. How it happens? When a school comes onboard, we set a geofence around the school of about 300 to 500 yards. Every time a parent with a registered cellphone, when they enter within the geofence, it's just a virtual fence. As soon as they enter, there's a digital handshake by which the school exactly knows who is in the car line and what position they are and whom they are authorized to pick up for that day. So, if Johnny is being in a car, is delegated to a carpool with Jimmy's dad, exactly when Jimmy's dad enters within the geofence, the teacher exactly knows that the dad is there to pick up Johnny and Jimmy in the same car. All this happens seamlessly without any extra hardware, any software. It just works. And as soon as the kids are getting into cars or buses, the teacher in the frontline of the dismissal with their iPad or any kind of a tablet application, they're able to swipe them off, and it triggers an instant alert back to the parent, giving a 360-degree accountability to parents that, hey, your son or daughter just left the school, got on so-and-so bus, or actually commenced to walk home. So, you can expect them at home in about 12 minutes or 14 minutes, keeping parents proactive in the whole system. This is, these are the current tools we use today. You know, walkie-talkies, clipboards, tkeynotes, loud healers to manage a process, which is not, we can do much better with the technology we already have with us. And that was our whole aim. Schools that have come onboard have reported significant lesser chaos in their traffic situation. And also, they have, more than 80% of the schools have said they've had significant improvement in the way they feel their children are safer and more secure. Parents have also expressed immense satisfaction by over 85% to 95% download. And parents don't uninstall once they get onboard. There's a USF study, which was conducted, an independent study, which came up with about $47,000 per school per year just in the teacher's time being saved during the whole process. We've won a lot of accolades and awards in the last couple of years, both nationally and internationally. But what we're really proud about is the testimonials we get from real-life parents, teachers, and administrators that we made a tangible difference in kids' life and also the teachers' workday. And we've kind of given them time back to do what is more meaningful and to do more education-related activities rather than dodge traffic in the end of the day. Absolutely. Over 85% of the school survey have said that it's drastically improved their timelines during pickup and drop-off. With the partnership with TBARDA and FDOT, what we are, just to give you a little bit of where we are going in the next school year, we will be able to give, we're using machine language and artificial intelligence to crunch a lot of routing information. What this means in simple language is whenever a parent leaves home at 2:40 or 2:30, we're able to tell them, hey, you may want to hold on for another five minutes so that you spend the least amount of time in traffic. What this does is actually mitigates the peak traffic around schools by influencing end-user behavior around schools. So, it makes the traffic actually flow smoother. And also, the parents are more satisfied and the kids are safer. So, what's not like. So, with that, there's another piece also. We are also able to predictively suggest to parents who want to participate and who wants to know that who else is using the same route, picking up kids from the same school? Maybe I want to consider carpooling with them. So, we proactively suggest to parents that, have you talked to Jimmy? He takes the same route. Would you want to carpool through a safe and secure platform? And then, it's up to the parent to meet out with me to the other parent and make sure they... and make sure there's a match outside the platform, and then use the platform to make the scheduling changes.
Mr. Candy?
I have to say, it's about time. Because, and I'm glad that your wife made you pick up your child that day because as a parent that's sat in these lines for years now, this is exactly, our schools have done a great job. Mr. Hebert can attest very much because he's had to do this at multiple schools. This is exactly, what you described is exactly what we face. And now what's happening is, our parents truly have the communication skills. They're looking for this. We are absolutely looking for this. And I hope that this board considers with this pilot because this is what our parents are asking for, this is what our schools are asking for. We are spending a great deal of time during the pickup and drop-off procedure. I remember Ms. Deutschman would say, we spend a lot of money on driveways and procedures and time for 10 and 15 minutes in the day. And this is just gonna get us a little farther down the road with this. So I just have to thank you for putting this together. Thank you for partnering with them so that we can bring this to some of our districts. And by the way, you've gotten some great press out of Tampa Bay Times. You've got articles, even Ed Weekly has covered this particular product. It's well-known around, when I heard it was coming here, I'm pretty excited because I've been reading about it, thinking, okay, when are we gonna get to that point?
Thank you so much.
Ms. Powers?
The teachers we never contacted. One time, I was asking the teacher, did you hook me up with a person who lives? That never happens much. And what is sending SROs to go to school and talk with the child up here?
So just to expand on that, so that's an answer. So with 85% parent participation, what we have also slapped on top of our system is an instant communication piece. So for an SRO, for school emergencies, for any kind of medical emergencies, bus running late, flat, tires, so forth. So the schools have that ability, even the districts have the ability, to send out instant notifications to parents on their phone where they're available 24/7. So dissemination of information, especially in SRO for any emergencies, becomes instantaneous. Gone are the days when we sent emails out from schools hoping the parent opens the email or cheats in kids' backpacks. So that's taken to a whole different paradigm wherein we're able to communicate the messages through real-time. Is that answered?
Mr. Dowd?
So is this program through TIBARDA, I mean, it's only gonna fund this for one year? Is that right, or are we talking three years?
We're looking to start with one year, and that mostly has to do with the budget restrictions that we have with the current grant. Throughout the process, we've been working with FDOT in programming. As I showed in one of my slides, what they call performance measure indicators. So that's, you know, any impacts to traffic around the school, how in any way we have helped influence shifting parents from driving their kids alone to and from school to maybe starting to carpool together. That opens up the opportunity at a later time for another pot of money. Of course, the plan isn't to subsidize it throughout the entire lifespan forever. Our hope is that with measuring a lot of this data and showing the improvements, that you'll be able to see what the benefits are and maybe be able to make some room in the budget in future years, seeing that there's enough savings and time in particular areas that are important to the board. So to start again, it is just for one year. But we are exploring other opportunities, and we would be in communications with you throughout, should be able to sort of, you know, come up with something prior to the end of the pilot.
Ms. Pow, I'm just giving you a quick reminder that you shared with us the monitoring target for Motherdale, 2017.
Yeah.
Mr. Dowd, I'm sorry?
It would be great if you guys could pick that cost up on an annual basis. That would make that a lot nicer, very nice.
Well, I mean, let me say, we've been successful in doing that with the regional school commute program because there are fees and costs associated with that as well as maintenance. So the end goal is to be able to do that with Pick My Kid as well.
Well, I guess the numbers you shared in the school program today, which is this number, showed 30 families out of 52 Hillsborough County schools. So every school has 30 families. That's for the commute program?
That's for the commute program.
That's right, the commute program.
Yes, that's only the commute program.
And the Pick My Kid, though, we're talking about 80%.
Right.
85%. Where are we at in that?
Yeah, we need 85%.
At an average, the lowest we see is about 80% participation from there. At the high end, it's actually over 100%.
So ironically, I was at a SAC meeting at St. Andrews Primary School, and the principal was talking about safety of the pickup line and had changed some things at Andrews Primary School. And I brought up your presentation today because I thought it would be very interesting. And, you know, surprisingly, it was very well-received. I think it was a little suspicious, maybe that's the trend. There were a lot of questions. I said, I don't know the answers. We're gonna have a presentation on it. But, you know, questions from, you know, well, how are they tracking us? To what if we don't have the cellphone? To, you know, is it really gonna improve this time factor? Because obviously, you're gonna have someone with a laptop, and you're gonna be able to tell when people are in line, literally where they are in the line, so that they will know which car is coming up next to child, right? That's what they do. So you obviously have some sensors around the campuses.
No.
It's all via, so it's all cellular data.
So that's what the cost-effective nature of our whole program. We, the only physical aspect of the entire program to work, we send a physical stop sign which says click announce. So there's no additional hardware, no installation, no sensors. Absolutely, it's hardware-agnostic. You can bring any device, it works from the cloud, works every time, and it's proven across the country to be really effective.
And so you notify the school when you arrive through your device?
So when a parent enters within the geofence which they set up, it's like 300 to 500 yards, a virtual fence, which we define in the software. So every time a parent drives within 300 yards of the school, automatically, there's a handshake which happens between the parent's phone and the system. And the school knows exactly who's in the line, what position they are. And when they come to the stop sign, they actually press a check-in button, so to speak. So that is for legal reasons. There's a stop sign, so they don't use their phone ever during motion. And we're very particular about that. And also, we're cognizant of the fact that the kids should not be, have any hardware dependencies. No cellphone or hardware or any form of hardware on the kids. And we started it like that, no biometrics, no tracking, so.
And that was just the question was asking, and I assumed that wouldn't be the case, but obviously, there's those questions out there. But, you know, it was, you know, I think that technology, this is where we're heading, right? With newer ways, better ways, maybe more efficient, so. I mean, I'm interested in programs.
I use, and I'm sure if I say this, a few Ken people will know, I use Life360 to communicate with my kids. So when my child gets to the school, I get a notification that says that they've gone in there because I have that fence that we've set up. When they leave, when they get to their athletic location, it lets me know. And it lets me know, in my case, that, you know, how fast they've been gone, whether they broke too fast, whether they provided, whether they were using their phone during that trip. And I pay, you know, usually about $6 a month for that type of information. But it's information as a parent that I want to know to help keep my child safe. A lot of parents are feeling that same way. And what I love about this is because we aren't using dependent on hardware, which is great for this district. We're pretty much just licensing is what we're looking at doing. And as a result, because it's not hardware-dependent, that cost factor for us is something we can look at. So I think it's a great pilot, it's a great way for us to get into it. Citrus County is, I think, an ideal situation because we do have a lot of pickup parents. That's, we don't, unfortunately, because of the size of our communities, a lot of our schools are just too far away for walkers and bike riders. So this certainly has that aspect. Am I correct, it also has an after-school aspect? So that my kids are going to another activity, I could work with a family to, so that I don't have to drive every day?
So the after-school program is integrated into our system, so a parent can actually delegate on a calendarized manner. That my child go to YMCA every Monday, every third Tuesday, picked up by grandma on every Wednesday. All those things can be defined. If a custody issue can be defined and cut off access, and all those things can be in the thing. And also, you brought up earlier about absentees. The schools can choose to trigger notifications on absentees. So if a child is absent for whatever reason, it triggers an alert back to the parent saying that the child was check-in, check-out. Even the YMCA, they can do the check-in, check-outs on this. And coming to the earlier point, we jokingly say the biggest competitor we have is tropophobia, fear of change.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and I'm confident. Well, it's 5 o'clock. Could you stick around?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. We need to go to our 5 o'clock presentations, and we'll have to start with.
On the ground.
Hi, Ms. Brown. First of all, thank you for allowing us to be here. Are you seeing green?
We are, we are.
We are very excited to present to the school board and Mrs. Himmel the STEM project that Crystal River Primary School has been working on all year. Every pre-K through 5th grade class has taken part in our Rockstar Eelgrass Project. And here is a sample. It's a little knucky because of the ride over from Crystal River. But this project started in 2014, actually. Mrs. Himmel was approached to see if she would endorse having the Crystal River, or, sorry, the Citrus County Schools participate in writing letters to our state legislators to encourage them to choose Crystal River for a pilot program to clean up the lymeia, which is an invasive algae that is taking over our river. For some of us, Mrs. Bryant?
Yes.
We remember when Crystal River was as clear as that water and you could see a sandy bottom.
Yes, you could.
And so we believe that by the efforts of our teachers and our students all across Citrus County, those letters touched the hearts of our legislators, and they did indeed give the grant to Crystal River. The first year, it was 1.4 million, I believe, and then the second time was 1.6 million. We sent over 6,000 letters, cards, pictures, hand-delivered in decorated boxes to their offices in Tallahassee. So it was quite a parade through the streets of Tallahassee with all 26. So that was in 2014. In the meantime, Crystal River Primary has been working hard to earn our green flag through the National Wildlife Federation. We are only one of three schools in the state of Florida who have the green flag. So we're very proud of those efforts. It's not just about water cleanup, it's about school grounds, it's about recycling, saving energy. So we're teaching our students to protect and preserve our environment and to value that environment. So now we fast forward to this year. Marie Bencowski is here with Save Crystal River along with her husband, Don. We have Lisa Moore and Bill Lyons that are representing Save Crystal River. We also have Dorothy Purnell, who is representing Duke. There she goes. Oh, there she is. So they got together and wrote a grant to fund this Rockstar Eelgrass Project. It was, you all approved that grant for us, so thank you for that. And that provided for the Rockstar Eelgrass Farms in all of our classrooms. So back in December, we started with the sand in all of those farms was dredged from Crystal River. The fire department pumped water from Crystal River, which we then filled with the water into the farms. Then Duke provided the Rockstar Eelgrass, which all of the students and Mrs. Himmel planted. They also provided a smart table for us to do some of the research. And throughout the year, the students have used those tools. They have done all kinds of scientific experiments, looking at different variables. You know, why did some grass grow really well? And why did some have a lot of algae in it? Did it make a difference if the tops were on, the tops were off? On the north side of the building, the south side, whether the blinds were closed? They just looked at all different things. They measured the growth, and then they also had to mow the grass. They actually had to cut it off because it was coming out of the tops of the farms. So our culminating activity will be our 5th graders this Friday, and we are celebrating ECO Week at Crystal River Primary this week. We will end with 5th graders on Friday going to Hunter Springs to plant whatever amount of grass that has been grown at Crystal River Primary. We also, through the grant, we will be able to place a permanent sign at Hunter Springs designating the area that we plant as being planted by Crystal River Primary Schools. This is a small version of what it is. And you will notice right in the very center, there's a small QR code. And we would like for each of you to have one of those codes. This will take you to the video that we're going to show you that was professionally done for our school.
Like many rural waterways, the health of Kings Bay and Crystal River is determined in their hands. An invasive algae called lymeia has overtaken the native grasses and men know it can decay and tear them and reduce the water quality. Native grasses are essential to the health of the crystal river. The microscopic animals and the animals that live in those grasses form the basis of the aquatic food chain. And without the grass, humanity and the other aquatic life will not survive. Save Crystal River is leading the effort to remove invasive algae and restore native grasses. I've grown a species called Rockstar Eelgrass and transplanted it in the Crystal River. The impact of algae has been reduced and the water quality has improved. This is where Crystal River Primary School joins the fight to save Kings Bay. Welcome to Crystal River Primary School. Our school is located in Florida's natural coast in the state of Crystal River. We would like to invite you to take a closer look at our school's 2016-17 ECO project. Crystal River Primary is a National Wildlife Federation Green Flag Award-winning school, one of only three in the state of Florida. Our project this school year focused on joining the restoration effort to save Crystal River. The students at Crystal River Primary are passionate about protecting the environment. Our school's project had our students build Rockstar Eelgrass Farms in each classroom. The first step was using sand and water from Crystal River for the tanks that serve the farms. Sand was removed from the river for the foundation for the tanks. Then the Crystal River Fire Department pumped water from Crystal River. Next, the students planted Rockstar Eelgrass. And now they are watching Rockstar Eelgrass grow in every single classroom at this day. The students are observing and reporting the growth of the eelgrass using scientific methods. Crystal River Primary is eagerly planning all this effort for the project, and we intend to grow Rockstar Eelgrass in the future.
So lastly, I would just like to recognize Brian Hingenspach. Would you please stand? He is our ECO Chair this year, and he has worked very closely on this project. And of course, it would not be possible. And of course, it would not be possible without the teachers and the students that have also participated. So would you all please stand so we can recognize you? We would have liked to have brought all 620 of them, but I knew there wasn't room, so we just had a few. And then, of course, Save Crystal River and Duke Energy. We could not, of course, do this without you. Thank you. So Friday, you are all welcome to come and join us in planting eelgrass at Hunter Springs. But just know, whether you're there or not, that we have truly made a difference. And these children that have worked with us this year, they have made a huge impact on the future and I know that they will continue to keep this dream alive. So thank you for your support. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Okay. Next, we have... Okay. We're gonna get a picture. We're gonna get a picture.
All right, next up on the agenda is the Escape Room Lesson Central Ridge Elementary School. As the doors close, the game begins.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Hemel, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you Jessie Carlucci, a teacher at Central Ridge. She has been a reach back for seven years and she has worked with her teaching partner, Kathleen Becarello Beazer, for the last five years. They work in an inclusionary setting. They started together in kindergarten, then they moved to 2nd grade, and they currently are teaching 5th grade. This presentation is the result of a visit from Mr. Mullen as he came on a Friday afternoon. And as we were touring classrooms, we went into Jessie's classroom and she was preparing the final touches to the classroom for this lesson that she will share with you. It, her enthusiasm for this lesson was contagious. And Mr. Mullen made the comment that our students in Citrus County, at Central Ridge, and in her classroom are so fortunate to have teachers who are excited to design and deliver engaging, relevant lessons for our students. He asked me to provide feedback to him on the outcome of the lesson and if Jessie was pleased with it, he wanted her to share it with you. And thus, I present to you Jessie Carlucci in the Escape Room.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. I truly appreciate it. It is such an opportunity to kind of brag about something you're very excited about in the classroom and we'll take every opportunity we can as a teacher. Thank you for introducing me so I can go to the next. I want to kind of give a quick shout out to my co-teacher, Kathleen Becarello Beazer. I have been blessed to work with her for five years. We have been in the same inclusion setting for five years. She is an amazing coworker, co-teacher, peer, and work wife. She is truly passionate, just as much as a teacher as I am. And without her excitement, we wouldn't have been able to execute this lesson, truly without her excitement as well. And I truly appreciate having her as my co-teacher. I just want to start off with some inspiration I had for the Escape Room. I had been following teachers on Instagram for a little bit over a year and I've been watching them plan these extravagant lessons. And I was like in awe over these teachers, but I was a bit skeptical, wondering, how are they meeting the standards and making it higher order? I kept following these teachers and after a while, I came across the elementary shenanigans. Her name is Hope King. She's out of Atlanta. And I was reading her blog and as I was reading it, I was like, oh my gosh, this is everything we do at Central Ridge and our standards. And it is possible to do these extravagant lessons and making them meet the standards in higher order. So it started off not as extravagant. We did the pie-based game to introduce author's purpose. We did the human hungry hippo to review science, which then motivated me to create an editing cafe to teach students to revise their work, the evidence award, and a few other things. And then it was after working with the students and seeing they were ready, it was time to go bigger and plan the Escape Room. And I will say, I had an aha moment that let me kind of know that it was time to plan a more extravagant lesson. When we did the pie-based game, it was to introduce author's purpose for pie, persuade, and form entertain. And I had a certain student, an ESE student, that after a few weeks of reintroducing author's purpose, we were taking a practice test and he was able to remember author's purpose. He goes, "Oh, pie, pie." And it was like, it was something that he was able to grasp onto. And I was like, this works. This is what we gotta keep going with, especially in an inclusion setting. So, as we said, it was time to try something more extravagant. We planned the Escape Room. Now, I don't know how much schema we have about Escape Room, but it's a physical adventure game in which players solve a series of puzzles using clues, hints, and strategies to complete the objectives at hand. Players are given a set time limit to unveil the secret plot, which is hidden within the rooms. Escape Rooms are inspired by escape room-style video games. Now, the Escape Rooms are actually, there is one in Crystal River. They're in Tampa, they're in Orlando. I know they're kid-friendly, they're scarier, they're just more for team building. I've heard you've even had the problem with small spaces to solve these puzzles, so... And we were a little skeptical at first, would the kids know what a Escape Room is? But I think when they saw the name, they kind of got the hint of what we were about to do. So I kind of wanted to talk about quickly before we go into the actual lesson, what we did behind the scenes as an educator. So we used, as you can see in the picture, the Ready FSA booklet. Honestly, that's a great resource. We have been using that resource all year and it has amazing passages and questions that go along with the passages. And I feel like it really prepares the students for FSA and it covers our ELA standards. We then used the Florida Ready FSA Assessment Practice booklet. I chose the passage, "The Show Must Go On." I purposely saved that one because I recall from last year, the students had, it was a little difficult for the students to do independently. So I thought, what a great passage to do to help them build their confidence and work together, especially since we did this Escape Room on a Friday and FSA was the following week. By using this resource, just this one passage alone was covering these standards, craft and structure for point of view, determining theme and summarizing the text, the key ideas and details for comparing and contrasting characters. And a huge standard that would really come across in 5th grade was interpretive figurative language and the phrases that it meant. So when I was planning the Escape Room, I wanted to make sure I met the requirements for myself. And by meeting the standards, I knew where I was based on the resource. And then, how do I make it higher order in that all students are engaged? So we came up with this template. We put the title, "Scaver Planning Sheet" on it. And for the planning sheet is actually, this is a little table that we taught the kids to draw on their papers and use it as a testing strategy for the computer-based testing. So we have the students write the question number, the answer, and where did their evidence come from. And by having them write where their evidence came from, I was then able, when I conference with the students, to say, well, why did you pick this answer? Where did your evidence come from and why is option B not a great choice for to answer the question? Also, before we started the game, the academic levels, we had mixed academic levels for predetermined groups. And before the students entered, they kind of regressed to the room being decorated from our previous activities. So they entered in right after specials. They did their normal routine, came in and started their ELA block. And then we, after about five minutes had passed, they were into their routine. Kathleen and I turned the lights down low, started playing some music, then we quickly shut the doors and said, "Now you have to escape." The whole class started screaming with excitement and were ready to go. And honestly, their stamina, we went for about an hour and a half and I kept watching the clock, waiting for them to start misbehaving. We're just for different things, so like had to get off task. And they stuck with us the whole time and we're excited. So now it's your turn to see if you can escape through. So we told the students, we told the students that they were just going to use an Escape Room kit and that they had to shine on what you can't see and follow the arrow. The students also wanted to give you some advice today. Wanted to say, think outside the box, expect anything. Use teamwork, but also don't shout too loudly because they don't want your partner next to you here so that they get out first. That was the advice from our students today. So if you want to begin by opening up your kit, you can pull out the paperwork for your clue. Now, the one thing the students did know, that they were not allowed to go to, they were not allowed to advance to the next clue until the guard or the teacher had come up to them. So if you want to start on clue number one, and if you look, there is an arrow and you can shine. So this... So the students were instructed to decide on what they can't see. So this is the main reason to why I wanted to do the Escape Room. The Escape Room is a physical... If you can, if you shine on what you can't see in the arrows, you will see it says, "You are to..."
Did you hear the guys get to do some of this? Not yet. I'm working on it.
So their first clue was done in the visible ink. Their first clue was done in the visible ink and it says, "QR Code Reader." So the students opened up the envelope and saw there was a QR code. They were able to scan it and it brought them to the passage, which kind of mimicked our FSA testing on the computer. They had their passage. So all the students had to work together to read the passage, which then, after they read it, they had to talk to the guard so they could go to the next clue, which gave us, Kathleen and I, an opportunity to ask the text dependent questions to make sure that they were comprehending the text. So now that the guard is allowing you, you may go ahead and shine on clue number two. On clue number two, if you shine with your invisible ink, it should have said teamwork. And on their planning sheet, which is the yellow piece of paper you had folded in your kit, explained was the teamwork. They had to work together to answer the questions, which again, goes back to the FSA style. And even one of my students today said, "We loved it because it was a more interactive way to do this instead of just taking the standard practice test." Now that you saw two of the question styles, you could go ahead. The guard once again is allowing you to go to clue number three. Shine on what you can't see. There should be an arrow to give you a clue. And it should say, "Piece it together." You doing good?
Thank you.
I think you might be the first one to escape.
Thank you.
So if you put it together, it was a question in a puzzle piece style. Now, as the guard, I will allow you to go to question clue number four. There is not an arrow, just a direction. Feel free if you want to. We do not have time to escape. Here we go. And you can see, that is actually a typical FSA-style question with a part A, part B. But once again, they were, as you can see in the picture, they were so excited and I was so proud of them. They all were very eager to do it together as a team to pop it. Now, if you, the guard is allowing you to clue, go to clue number five. I will tell you, I saw a student sitting next to the door because they thought if someone would come in, they would gag and try to escape. You are more than welcome to try. They had a lock that they had to, had to use the lock which came with the code, which was great practice for middle school. And I'll pass out. Once they open it, they're helping everyone.
Wow.
Yes, the questions were shared as a team. Thank you. And then here is... So question 11 was their final question. So everyone has one. And then they got to go to the final clue. You see on the backboard, it says yellow, says final clue. And they had to use the decipher. You all should have a little, Missy God has it. Now, once again, it says there is an arrow, which means shine on what you can't see. And this is your final step to escape. Great, sir. She got it. If you look at the code decipher in visible ink, it says T equals 17 and G equals 4. So that means you need to align the numbers, the T with 17 and G with 4. And if you took the time to solve the code, it would say, you solved it, you win, you can escape. But please notice there is another arrow and it says, "You can escape at 3:30."
To which they go.
But they did get to escape. The students were very excited. You can see we had the doors blocked off with like tablecloths. We had yellow ribbon set up to mimic caution tape. We had signs around the room, we had music playing. I mean, they were fully engaged for a good hour and a half and very excited. And this one is for Miss Bryant. You may recognize a familiar face. We have DJ Harold playing. The human hybrid of both. I want to thank you all for this opportunity. The kids loved it. The kids were overly excited that we were getting to present this and they couldn't wait to hear if you guys escaped.
We were still, we were still when we went to a time circuit.
Okay, we have 5:30 for public comment. Do we have anybody who has a public comment? No, we're free to comment. Okay. So now we're going to go to recognition of national merit scholarship participants.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I am very lucky to be here to recognize our national merit scholarship finalists. To give you a little background first, our national merit scholarship program, it's an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that actually began in 1955. High school students enter the program by taking the PSAT, or also known as the NMSQT, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, a test that serves as an initial screening of approximately 1.5 million entrants each year. And also, they also have to meet some other entry and participation requirements as well. So of those 1.5 million entrants, only 50,000 or so, approximately 50,000 students, the highest scores, they're calculated, and it's in reading, writing, and language and math, qualify for recognition in the program. And so in September, these high scores, one-third of those 50,000 high scores were notified that they were semifinalists. And for as long as I can remember, I will tell you, we've only had one student each year. Sometimes we even had a year that we didn't have any. But, and I was even looking at other counties around, only, only we have one student that is notified they're semifinalists and then move on to being a finalist. This year, we had three students.
Wow.
Okay, that were in that top one-third of the 50,000 students, which is just unheard of, and they are just phenomenal. So we are here today to recognize those three students because all three students were semifinalists and then also moved on to the finalist round, which is even more so. So they are the top 1% of who we're talking about, of all these students. So I'd like these three remarkable students to please come forward. And if I say your name incorrectly, I'm going to try my best, okay? I have a pronunciation next to your names and you know who I'm talking to. Sashank. Yes, Sashank. He's, I'm sure, very familiar with it. First, let's congratulate Sashank. Let me say her last incorrectly. Desaraju. We also have Matthew McDermott. And Gregory Bitner. These three students, like I said, for the first time, we actually had three, not even just two, more than one, we had three students receive this honor of being a finalist in the national merit scholarship. And of these three students, we did get notified that two of them did actually receive the national merit scholarship, Sashank and Matthew. And Gregory received the college-sponsored merit scholarship. So we really, really congratulate all three of you. You represent us very well and we congratulate you. Thank you.
So there's a, there's some, these guys are rock stars, by the way, in the, among a lot of their peers. I mean, and it doesn't matter what school you go to, their names are known. So one of them though is a little, is, is got a very interesting talent. He can solve, what can you do, Ms. Crown?
Rubik's Cube in an average of 15 seconds. Solve the Rubik's Cube.
So we made sure that there was a Rubik's Cube here today.
No, you did not.
Yes, we did. And so, so anyone and everyone in the audience can see, it is a solved right now Rubik's Cube. Mr. Dodd, would you do us the favor and mix that up so that we can, because I know that Mr. Dodd's a competitor and he can appreciate making sure there's a good challenge. These, these, these young men, as I said, they really are great examples to their peers. They are, are just amazing. My son, I can tell you, looks up to them and we appreciate so much how, it doesn't matter what school they're from, they, they love to partner and learn about others who are of like mind in this community. And we are pretty blessed to have three of these young people. And really, the, the young men and women that are going to follow him in just a second are, are pretty amazing, but. So Mr. Dodd, did you mix it up there pretty good or?
This is very fast. This is very quick. Here you go. Has the time started yet?
Is that all you got?
First move.
Oh, wait, Mary, let me, let me, uh, let me get my, let me get my stopwatch so, okay. Ready? Whenever you go, I'll start. Right at about 15 seconds. I, I didn't hit the button just enough. I've got it at 16 seconds, but it was right about 15. That is way incredible. Thank you so much for showing off your talents.
Next on our agenda is recognition of the 27th team Commissioners Academic Challenge participants who placed sixth in the state in Division Two.
So again, I'm here to applaud this team, our county team. This is the Commissioners Academic Challenge, which Mrs. Himmel and our foundation, our education foundation did help sponsor this year. It's a statewide high school tournament started in 1986. The districts are placed into three divisions based on our fall enrollment and we are in Division Two. Each team consists of six members and a coach. Just if you are not familiar with how the academic team works, it's, it's not a quick response like Trivial Pursuit type contest. It's more of a slower paced tournament in which players are asked questions from the areas of language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, fine arts, world languages, and technology. Each, but even more so to a greater, to a greater scale. Each of our high schools' academic teams competed during the fall semester to determine a district winner. So we have a team at All Chris River High School. We have one at Citrus High and at Lucanto High. The district winning team in December, we announced was Lucanto High School. They then had a district buzz off competition in December to determine what students would represent our all-county academic team. And then this team is who I'm going to be introducing you to today. They practiced through the months of January to April to prepare for the state competition that took place at the end of April at Walt Disney World. And they really did represent us well. Our Citrus team competed in the Division Two preliminary and progressed to the semifinals. Then they successfully progressed to the final round where they did place in sixth place. First, before we bring them up here for their certificates and to show appreciation, I would like to thank our coaches who really helped them out, of course, as well. Our CHS coach was Michael Waika. Chris River High coach, John McNeil, and he's here, right? There he is. And then our LHS coach was Lynn Borst. Was one able to come? Okay. And we definitely know they spent a lot of time and efforts in helping this team and you can see the team members all nodding their heads, they agree. Okay, so now at this time, we would like the following students to come forward as we congratulate our all-county academic team. And you'll recognize two of these names right off the bat. Matthew McDermott, who is the team captain, was also one of our national merit scholars. And Sashank Desaraju. Dennis Nguyen. Jake Panapinto. A.J. Patel. And Yuna Soni. Mr. McNeil, we're going to enjoy it here as well. We congratulate all of you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all for coming. We are going to go back to the Tabarta presentation and look at this pilot program. Just whether or not you want to move forward. They're going to have licensing agreements. They're going to have.
They would. There's no purchase of boards going, right? They would have to prove to work with them. Can you tell us what, how to move forward from here?
I'd like to see the licensing agreement that they're, that they're talking about, the licensing agreement between the school district, the licensing agreement with the parents. You know, how it works. I see confidential student record.
But we can, but we can make a motion that we move, that we move forward and staff works out the documentation, the requirements.
But just not to approve the pilot program outright without having an opportunity.
Or, or can we approve it subject to legal approval?
I'll tell you, if we can't get it out to our schools to work on this summer, we're not going to roll it out. We can't roll it out. We can't, my staff just can't take this and put it out in August and start using it the next day. That's not going to happen.
Can we, could we make it subject to legal approval? And then if there's a problem, you know, hopefully then it gets turned right around or? I'm trying to just make sure we expedite.
I mean, I understand.
You're not wanting us to, you're wanting to make sure you review the contract before we, we do that. So I, I understand that.
I know it's another school district and that's fine. So that doesn't mean that.
Any exceptions?
Correct. We can approve the pilot program subject to my approval, whatever the licensing.
I, I know we're going to still talk, but I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the pilot subject to, what was it?
School board attorney.
School board attorney review and approval of the licensing agreement.
The motion is second. I need, and then we've got other questions and comments. Ms. Kelt.
I'm answering a question that I had that two minutes after five.
Yeah, that's right.
Because I thought everything was moving just a little bit too fast. And I'm, I'm concerned that this is a pilot program and we are a rural county. And you're not disclosing address of students' names and you're dealing with intersections. But when I look at the map and the geography of our area, I'm wondering about how successful we would be because we have parents that might be at that same intersection, but they still might be six or seven miles away from another child's home. So I was, I'm concerned about a pilot program and with this.
Are you talking about a carpooling?
Yeah, I can provide some clarification on that. While we use intersections to match, that's really a designation of where the parent is located. Within each profile that they create, they can specify how far out they are willing to go. So it may be five miles, it may be 10 miles, but that is a little drop down box of who do you want to be matched with? Do you want less than half a mile, a mile, two to three miles, greater than five miles? So that it's pretty specific as far as making sure that people are getting the best quality matches as possible.
And the parents put their own information in when it comes to that. That's not something.
That's correct.
Districts.
That would be, now at the other end, where how protected are we on our privacy issue with children?
You, you have no protection of what I do as a parent with my information. That's not.
Well, that's just concern. True. But I don't know until I have an offer.
There's two different things here. One is the information for the parent pickup and the other one is a carpooling, which are two, two different topics.
Yes.
That's correct.
But yet, we want to approve this project as one, right? Correct. They, they want to do pilot both programs.
Correct.
But I do, I'm just asking, telling you for clarification, because when you ask questions about the pick, pick my kid, that is not the same, it's not the same as the.
Here's my, and it's not an issue, I'm not saying that this can't work, but a pure carpooling app, you don't need the school system.
Right.
You can just put a app right there that says, hey, anybody located in Citrus County, if you want to carpool your children together to go to school, you know, sign up. The other side of it has information that you're probably getting from the school system.
Correct.
There's confidential information that's implied. It's the same thing, go to emergency contact card. If somebody has, somebody has hot on the emergency contact card, have to figure that out. You know, if, you know, if your phone's not password protected, I put your phone up, living something that I can reach a child up, you know, and I'm not on there, you know, if there's liability issues, there's all kinds of little things that ramble my head.
These are the same things that we're already doing with other software programs, whether it's the call out program that we're using, whether it's the pay for your lunch program through cafeteria or through food service. So we already have programs in place and we're aware of those security measures. And I understand this program.
And I, I would say that we.
But it's not something we've never done before. We're doing it now with other software.
And we're, we're doing it sometimes with much less security right now. I mean, I can go, I get, as a, as a parent, I'm going to get a card that I'm going to get issued at registration. It's going to, somebody hand writes my name on it. And it is, we always used to joke as parents, anybody could go to the, you know, get ahold of one, copy it and put anybody's name on it and theoretically get a child. And the same thing can also go with some of the other factors of, of the security that we have for our procedures. We do the best we can, but as the developer talked about, it's not inconceivable to actually either intentionally or unintentionally have the wrong child in a vehicle. I feel like the idea that this actually provides a little bit of extra safety. And again, it's a pilot. So we're going to find out the things that we, as Mr. Brad just mentioned, that we, that we may not have to still address. We may have to adjust policies and procedures for those schools that do it. We might find that, that we have great buy-in. We might find out that, you know what, it was a great idea, but this doesn't work. But if we can expedite, because I know we did one small thing, for example, at Citrus Springs Middle School, where I pick up my own child, where we just made one change having to do with lanes. And that change has dramatically cut in half the number of cars out on safety on the road as well as the amount of time that we can, we reduce by say, picking up children. And that time equals safety and money into our school. And that time equals safety and money into our school system. So if we can look at something like that, where we're able to accomplish that digitally, I think we, you know, we owe it to explore. And I agree with Mr. Bradshaw, I'm still concerned. That doesn't make that...
I'm not opposed to the concept, I mean, that's the way the world is changing. The door to, I just, you know, to be able to read, to approve your approval.
Well, you're proving nothing without your...
Cutting down the number of cars picking up for a change of lane probably maintains the same amount of cars, same parents picking up their kids. This is going to be putting other kids in other parents' cars to reduce the cost.
But not necessarily with the Pick My Kid. The Pick My Kid is really just an organizational way of dealing with the number of cars that have been coming through. Not necessarily that will reduce anything in that particular software solution.
When we reviewed, we felt like it was an added layer of security for parents and their kids.
And if I recall, this, this can be used, from what I remember, in our buses, where we can actually check our students in on our buses, which right now we are doing manually, by hand. This could expedite that, which would save not only money, but it would also... How many times have we been at schools where we get the call, so-and-so is no longer a bus driver? They're a pickup. Oh, they were supposed to be a pickup. That would alleviate those issues that I think we're talking about. And there were some other added benefits that I heard. I don't know that it was pitched in this particular, but I certainly saw that I thought it opened up that I'm hoping staff explores. Well, we do take child safety very seriously here. And so I do agree with Mr. Bradshaw, we do make sure we're covering every base. Mr. Mullin, though, let me just ask you this question. It's not really feasible for the start of the school year. We're looking at two schools at Christa River.
I think it is if we can move forward today. But I think if I have to wait to come back and then present this to you in June, my staff, teachers are already gone. And that means I'm not training teachers till they come back to school in August, which that puts things, that puts us way behind as far as putting that into place. That takes the entire summer away from informing parents. We're not suggesting move forward before we make sure that everything applies. Like, I don't have a month to wait before we start doing that.
So can you make a commitment to us, though, to give us more than one-year funding? I mean, this is a pilot project, you know. I don't doubt that we're going to have some great success with it. But, you know, the issue's going to be, I think it's going to come down to a lot of budget issues. So, I mean, can't you give us, you know, make a commitment for two years?
That has been a concern with other districts as well. And it's something that we're working out with the Department of Transportation. Right now, the scope is defined for one year. So we'll have to go back to them and clarify and see if we can make this multi-year.
Board members, keep in mind, if we were just to use the figures today that were provided to us at 14 schools, I'm sorry, 15 schools, meaning every middle and elementary school in Citrus County, you're talking about $50,000 for the entire district. When you're talking about the labor costs involved, when you're talking about the safety and security, as well as some of the other factors that I think we're going to find cost savings-wise, if we decided to implement this district-wide, I think we're going to actually find that it's going to be saving us monies. I would like to, I think that by being able to have these pilots paid for, we're going to be able to test that out using non-district resources to accomplish that.
There's some other, and again, we have not gotten, been able to use the program. We have been in conversations, and we spent a good amount of time on that. We feel like the program has the potential to eliminate the purchase of several other programs that we're using right now. So that's, that's a cautionary.
So that was my question. Where do we realize the $30,000?
Well, we think there's other programs that we're using that can be embedded in. The service from those programs can be embedded into this, even through food service that will be of benefit to us. And we can come back and not spend money on those programs and utilize this.
Well, even the mere fact of the amount of labor we have out during, right now, if you go to every elementary school, the amount of personnel that have to go to deal with the parent pickup portion of a school for those number of minutes a day is a significant number. And I would bet dollars to donuts that with this type of system, we can reduce that amount of staff that's obligated to that particular need. Because I can, you know, take Central Ridge, for example. It's a great system, and we could get them in and out in about 20 minutes. But it was very labor-intensive in order to do that. And part of that is the safety and security. And again, we're still using, not digitally, you know, defined who's the parent, but we're using little cards that we made up and printed that say a person's name. And, you know, that's the way the old system was. It was good enough. I think we owe it to the public to make sure that we are far more secure than that.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further questions or comments?
Just to be clear, this is contingent on approval. We'll work it out with Mr. Bradshaw.
Absolutely. That's what it is.
And this is for Christa River School.
I didn't know it's...
Those were the two schools that we felt like we had, who provide us the best...
I'm going to do that. That's a decision, but we're not voting on that.
No, we're not.
You're content with it being a pilot program or the checks and balances? Is there information back to us that is certain points all the way through?
Yes, and Mr. Bishop wanted to do, this was a middle school, because of recent transportation study.
Yeah, they have a track study in the area, and it identified the area of usually running schools as being a problematic area. So we should not this big worry about...
So we have some baseline data that's solid to start with, so we can go for that. There was a method to the math, so I would think.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Hosed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, I think we're to the regular part of the agenda. Come on, Suzie. Almost six o'clock, sorry about that.
Go ahead and go if you'd like.
Yeah, you guys don't like to stay.
Unless you want to give us an extra year, in which case you can sit around while you want.
All right. No problem. Good evening. I am here to ask approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Golden Rod. I read those this morning. Thank you.
Do I see Ms. Mullin's name there?
Yes, you do.
And if I recall, resignation from drop is that she is done with her retirement and she is given to our students.
That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin.
Absolutely.
The only one I had a question on is Bridgette Merchant. She's leaving Forest Bridge as a teacher on assignment. I told her that she's been appointed.
Correct. Anytime. We have employees. That is correct. That instructional position to be hired as the assistant principal into an administrative position. Did you teach Bridgette? Oh, yeah. Okay, good. Me too.
Mr. Kennedy, we also gave a look at Mrs. Henkel from the support side.
Oh, thank goodness. Enter my page.
Yep.
She's had a great career, a lot of service here.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve instructional and support personnel information as presented upon the Golden Rod.
We have a motion by Mr. Dodd, the second. I'm Ms. Kelt. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. Have a good evening. Thank you, Suzie. We appreciate you. All right, Mr. Dodd, City of Christa River.
Yes. So we just, we're giving this today, and so I just wanted to make sure I understood...
It's the same as...
It's the same agreement brought to the board in March for MS.
I guess my initial question I would ask, had I received this earlier, was the dates on it. The agreement is going to begin on May 9th and end on September 8th in the same year. So obviously, there's a reason for that, but I'm not sure what the reason is.
Because when we bid it out, the unincorporated areas, trash collection, the bid was up until September 8th with two one-year singular extensions. And so both the City of Emirates and the City of Christa River agreed to honoring that option of two one-year extensions.
With our vendor? Is that what that, I mean, is it that with our vendor there?
They'll still be using their vendor, but they'll match the prices that we pay.
But I'm sorry, I mean, as if they were a vendor, as if, I'm sorry. I said it wrong.
With this, then are trash service changes then?
Just the amount we pay for the trash service. We're going to save $26,000 a year by exercising our home law authority with the City of Christa River loan, so it's $26,000 saved.
This is what was negotiated, so this is what takes place actually today if we approve this.
That's correct.
And then it will renew in September for up to two more years.
That we have the ability to do that? Two more years, yes, sir.
That's all the questions that I have.
Okay, you have a motion.
I move that we approve the interloper agreement. Solid, city solid waste and disposal collection between the City of Christa River and Citrus County School Board.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Walker, it says, I don't know. We pulled from the agenda, G.
I like $25,000.
Uh-huh.
That wasn't there. That's why I was pulling.
I think we should hold them to it.
We're responsible for putting that, that's looking like a wrong place.
I questioned it when I read it, but I said, okay, we'll take it.
Okay, we're referring to the fact that I'm requesting board approval for the 2017-18 agreement between the Citrus County School Board and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office for the School Resource Officer Program. Correct?
Correct.
And I share all of the motion that we approve the 2017-2018 agreement between the School Board and the Sheriff's Office for the School Resource Officer Program.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any questions or comments?
I didn't know. Do I need to list out a couple of revisions that have happened since the copy went out? Do I need to lift those out or not?
List the revisions first and then assemble them. How about that?
Sure. And they will be brief. The revisions on page one, the preamble, they had the word preamble twice. We've reduced that to once.
That's good.
And the first paragraph, we changed just a little bit. It says, "In recognizing the relationship between the community and today's youth, the Citrus County Sheriff's Office and the Citrus County School Board will continue to develop a strong rapport and partnership between the Citrus County Sheriff's Office, the School Board, and individual students. The SRO program will educate council and provide a law enforcement presence that will help students develop into better citizens." And then we added, "while maintaining the highest levels of safety for children and to maintain safe and secure schools." So that would be changed on page one. On page two, Article 2A, 1, we asterisked the schools that have a full-time School Resource Officer, which would be all middle and all high schools. We corrected the WTI to WTC, and they had omitted inadvertently the Homosassa Elementary School, so we added that one. On page three. Okay, that's... I'm, yes, I'm sharing with you changes that have come about since you received your copy. And I can get a current copy to you, Mrs. Powers, if you'd like. Page three, B, item four. The copy that you're looking at says elementary resource officers may be designated for up to three schools. That's been corrected to reflect two schools, which happened last year when we were able to add one more School Resource Officer. And then page four, item H. We have removed the last part of item H. So item H now reads, "The SRO shall take law enforcement action as required as soon as practical. The School Resource Officers shall make the principal of the school aware of such action. At the principal's request, the SRO shall take appropriate law enforcement action against intruders and unwanted guests who may appear at the school and related school functions, period." We removed the part that indicated that the School Resource Officer would need to check with the principal to call additional law enforcement. And then page five, Article 3B. Just a typo on that last line of item B of the educational program shall be reviewed and A and D agreed upon. Mr. Dodd brought some of these items to our attention, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Sharon.
And that would be all as far as the revisions. And, yes. Actually, as far as the program is concerned, they do have a sergeant and a lieutenant. And we communicate in the evening and on weekends regularly when things are going on. So we are... Yes.
Very good. Okay.
Ms. Jurich, what number were USRO in the county?
It was the first.
You were the first?
Yes, I was. Yes. I'm super old, though.
I didn't mean it that way either. I actually meant, as I do. I know this is something that is near and dear to your heart, as it is Mr. Dodd's and a lot of ours. We love our SROs, the SRO program. We are very grateful of it. As soon as the state can continue to fund appropriately, we would be more than happy to do more with that with our SROs.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. Now we're to health insurance update.
It's the moment you've been waiting for.
Yes.
But I am going to give you a quarterly update of the health insurance fund. And this is just showing you the claims data that we have. It is showing you the claims by month for 2014, 2015, 2016, and so far, 2017. So let me just say, this first quarter update is the first quarter of our health insurance year, which is a calendar year, so it is January, February, and March. If I can just list out, for the 2016, the claims total, those asterisks are pointing out to you that that is before we received reimbursement checks from Symetra on those. So for those months with the asterisk, we received a total of 1.6 million back from Symetra. So when you take that into consideration, actually, the average per month would be 933,805, which is more in line. So I just wanted to list that out. This is the same information. It's just showing you a graph of the months. January being the orange, February the yellow, and March the green. It's just, again, the same information. I did break this down, so just to show you our first three months, the first quarter, so that you can see what is going out as far as the medical and what is going out as far as pharmacy for that total. And the total is what you saw on the previous slide. So you see that we still are experiencing a large number in our pharmacy. I did look at, on a monthly basis, where is the money going? And so then we looked at March and said, why are we up 300,000? There was one particular extremely large claim, but then the balance of it was pretty equally dispersed across the board, inpatient, outpatient, pharmacy. There was not anything I could zero in on other than that one particular claim. And... This is the same information. It's just showing you that medical is the blue and the pharmacy is the orange. Got your gate of colors, Ms. Murray?
Thank you.
Okay. Then this is showing you our monthly averages. And so the monthly average for the first quarter of 2014, monthly average for the first quarter of 2015, 2016, and 2017. And then I have the annual averages there as well. Just to remind you, to help our budget this year and to help our circumstance as far as the self-insurance fund, we do know that... the self-insurance fund, we do know that it was a more difficult year than usual as far as our premium increases. So to share with you, in 2016, our monthly premium revenue on average was 1.150 million. And so then, when we went to prepare our budget prior to our 2017 year, we anticipated that our monthly average revenue would be 1.365. So we were pretty accurate to budget, and we're coming out a little bit higher than that. Our average thus far has been 1.375. And it is still early, it's only the first quarter. Okay, let me get to this. All right, this is sharing with you, when we sat down with Crown and we took a look at this, we came up with what we think our monthly budget was going to be. We have to make projections as to what we think our claims will be, what our premiums will be, what our membership will be, who's going to migrate from one plan to another. So based on those projections, this is the monthly budget that we came up with. And then you see our actuals for January, February, and March. So if I could go through the monthly budget column, we did project that our premiums would be 1.365. Other revenue, other revenue would be things such as we get money back for our DOT physicals that we do, there's a little bit of interest that we gain, so that's what we budgeted in per month that we would get for other revenue. So for total revenue per month, it's the 1.381. For expenses, we projected our monthly claims to be 957,000. We projected our Florida Blue admin fees that we pay to be 69,362. The reinsurance premium, which is Symetra, we had projected 58,000. For care here, our projections as far as care here expenses, and this includes the program fees, the service fees, which is our monthly bill we get that includes provider costs, and our pharmacy expenses, the prescriptions they buy to carry in the wellness center, we projected for those expenses to be 145,350. Wellness center other, those are things, those are bills we pay out of the risk management office, which comes out of the self-insurance fund, but that's things such as the garbage, the electric, the rent, and we projected that to be $3,748 per month. And you see where we're running a little bit low there, I'll just point out that the rent is due, we pay two installments of our rent, we pay it in June and December, so we have not paid any of the rent yet. So that's where a good chunk of that would come, would go. Other expenses for the self-insurance fund, such as the Affordable Care Act fees and postage that we pay for anything that we mail out that is health insurance related, we budgeted per month 6,600. So you see the total that we budgeted in expenses. So you've got your total monthly revenue, you've got your total monthly expenses, so we anticipated that we would net 141,000 per month. Then we also have to calculate in the fact that our aggregate specific pooling, that is our Symetra reinsurance, before our Symetra reinsurance, anytime a claim goes over 175,000, we can hope to get reinsurance back. But before we start getting that back, we have to observe the first 670,000 of that. So we have to budget that $670,000 is going to go out before we can start getting our reimbursements. So that is an expense. So you divide that by 12, the monthly expense of that would be the 56,000.
And how many of those did we have last year, do you remember?
How many particular claims?
Oh, that went to reinsurance, yeah.
I believe, and this is off the top of my head, and I don't mind if you, I would say it was about four, four to five of our employees who met that threshold.
You've looked at six.
Right, the total was 1.6 million in dollars that I mentioned in a previous slide, but as far as numbers of individuals, I would want to get back with you on that.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so you've got your revenue, your expenses, your net, some more expenses with the aggregate specific pooling, so then that surplus per month, if all were to go as planned, would be 85,000. And if you were to multiply that out by 12 months, then you're looking at 1 million. And as we said, we are planning to try to help build that.
Reserve.
Reserve that we need to have. Thank you. I'm 6:30 at night. We are planning to build our reserve. And so again, you know, this is early in the year, we're only three months into it. We are looking good when you look at January, February, and March. These are the lower months as far as claims, because folks have not yet, they're paying out of pocket, they haven't met their deductibles, they haven't met their out-of-pockets. So more is coming from the employee than from the actual fund. So we anticipate, as the year goes on, our claims will go up. We have put things in, we've put safeguards in to try to help us, protect us from things that could happen. You know, we could end up with more extremely high claimants than we anticipate. We try to plan for that with our Symetra reinsurance. So again, I just caution us that it is early in the year, but when we sat down, that was our goal, was to try to help build our reserves. And that's where we come up with those numbers. And if things go as planned, we hope that we are, that we will have a good amount in our reserves and not have to take from the general fund. Of course, that is something we don't want to do. I do want to remind you that the end of this fiscal year, though, on June 30, it's not going to reflect as good a picture as you're looking here, because we've got six months from last year's premiums still, six months from this year's premiums. The end of this calendar year, when we do our actuary report, we're looking at 12 months that we planned for, and hopefully we're in a good place.
Well, you know, this is very important information that the board has, I mean, that we should get, and we are getting that, so I appreciate that, because this is a lot of money that we spend for health. And, you know, we put on the consent agenda, but, you know, I think it's important to point out that we did stay with Florida Blue for pharmacy, and we also, you know, stayed with Blue Cross and Blue Shoe of Florida for our administrative services. And that was something that I was pretty skeptical about at first, because I felt like there could be some savings there, but the work, I appreciate the work that was put into that, you know, and I agree that that was the best decision for us to make, it was the best price decision for us to stay with that. It's the best network for our employees, and it's a pretty high-quality service for the, you know, for the money that we spend. So I just wanted to make a point, I know none of us pulled that from the agenda to discuss, but that was something that we have looked at and agree with. And so I hope our employees too understand that, that there is some assurances that, you know, I want them to be assured that we're looking at these numbers and that we know the importance of it, but there's a lot of things too that show that they're, the network, you know, the providers, those are important to us too. But I was happy to see the figures come in the way they did, so it was an easy decision for me. But thank you all for putting that work in.
Mr. Dodd, I mean, I'm glad that you pulled it, that's fine. Why did you pull? I thought you pulled this.
No.
Oh, never mind, never mind, I misunderstood that. I'm sorry. Because I was thinking, because I was going to say, we normally see these, we just had a workshop on the, on this, so that's why I was thinking, we were pretty comfortable with it. But I agree with you, and I'm glad that you've been, you've been very good about staying on top of this and watching this, and I know you had some concerns, but I think you're right, they made us all feel a little better.
And I would say, we do make our, we have made efforts for our employees to know that we are being very diligent through our Health Insurance Committee, there's a representative from every school, and so I met with them just a week ago, I asked them to take information back to their school sites, so that's a priority for us, is to make sure our employees know that we are doing our due diligence. And I appreciate Ms. Bryant being on our Health Insurance Committee as well. Okay, I have concerns. There's another slide or two, but I'll be fast.
I love that you did that.
That's okay. I'm happy then. No-shows, I just wanted to give you a bit of an update on the no-shows.
That's not good.
They are creeping up.
Really?
Yes, they are creeping up, and as you know, January 1, we implemented the no-show fee. It's only hitting the pocketbook starting now, with the assistance from HR, Mr. Bowmer and Suzie, they help oversee that. Mr. Bowmer does the day-to-day overseeing of the no-shows. And it is just now going to hit their checks. Remember, it's the second and subsequent time that a person is a no-show, that they're going to have $25 payroll deduction. We have had six folks who have met that, and they will now be seeing their payroll deductions. A lot of people have had their first one, so then unfortunately with these numbers, people are going to start hitting their second one, it's going to start being a payroll deduction, they're going to be reminded, oh yeah, there's a fee. So we do hope that we see these maybe a reduction.
Are there retirees that they don't get a check from us anymore? Is there any women who get into their retirement?
Two of our six. Two of our six. No, you're right on, you're spot on. Two of our six are retirees, and they will be billed.
Good.
Two of our six, one-third of our no-shows.
And they've all been informed that we used to, the fee, and when they don't show up in their time, it's depriving somebody else who they use in the wellness center.
Right, and it's costing us at a minimum $100. Here's a chart showing the no-shows. Red is 2015, the yellow is 2016, and the blue is 2017. Now, I'm done.
We thank you, Ms. Jurich, you work very hard. Attorney Legal Matters.
I was asking, out of the Attorney Legal Matters, we have an Educational and Technology Services Agreement with Edgenuity. And I'm like, Mr. Rowland, I can tell you exactly what all it does, but it's a virtual school program here. I swear I reviewed this prior to, if I might not give you the go-ahead, so you can, you know, take a look at it, approve it, and then go back to my office and just double-checking that. My understanding is, I mean, you don't roll this out now.
We need to advertise that we're doing it, we can't do that until we agree that that's where we're going to purchase from. But we'll work out the details with Mr. Bradshaw there, Attorney.
Mr. Rowland, he'll go into more detail, but he was explaining to me it's a way for us to keep up to E1D, but us, I'm just going to give it up. I'll let him get into it.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys letting us present these today. These are both very positive things and going to monetarily help us as a district and provide services for our students. You have two staples section, one says Attachment A, and one says Educational and Technology Services Agreement. And if, I would like to start with the paper that has Attachment A at the top. And on Attachment A, these are services we already provide our students and our schools, and what we've done is consolidated these services with a company that provides a better product, and through bundling these services, we're saving about $73,000. But I'll go through each of the items one by one and explain what they are. The first two at the top, integration and professional development, that has to deal with importing data on a nightly basis, and also the professional development is self-explanatory. The courseware licensing, which is credit recovery, we currently use Play-Doh at the high school, and we use E2020 or Edgenuity at the middle school. And those two products currently cost us $110,000. And going with Edgenuity exclusively for high school and middle school, we reduce the price to $81,000. We still offer the same services. Edgenuity is bright, they meet all the bright future requirements, and they are NCA certified, so they, they're, this company is in close, works closely with the state, so they check those boxes. On the GradTrak licensing, we currently use Ed Options. That's for students who have made the, met course requirements, but they haven't passed the state exams. Currently, we pay $1,500 for students to get this service. And through Edgenuity, using Giant Campus Academy, we're reducing that cost to $975 a student. And we typically have 85 students, around 85 students go through that each year. So we are reducing the cost of that from $127,000 roughly down to $82,000. So that's a combined saving of those two programs to $73,000. The last, well, that covers that section right there. Any questions on those? Those are, again, those are existing services that we provide our students, we have just consolidated them at a better price. And actually, the product, we let our teachers see the products, and that's the reason it's taken quite a while, as we've had meetings, and the teachers have put their hands on the product, and they like the product better than the Play-Doh product that we were using previously.
Mr. Rowland, that was going to be my question, because Play-Doh, while we appreciated the service it provided for a long, number of years, it really just did not keep up with the modern technology world, and it was, it was not very fresh, it was not very engaging, it was, I mean, again, it was, it was the nuts and bolts, and it helped us get through, so if I recall from a little bit, I've heard about this, this is a far more engaging platform than what that was. Is that correct?
That is correct. And again, if the teachers would not, if they didn't like it, we wouldn't have gone with it. But the cost savings were going from $208,000 down to $163,000 on that product.
We still have to have, I'm assuming, a teacher like Play-Doh, you still had to have your certified teacher, or that same process with that?
Correct.
The other thing, we've gone from Penn Foster to, who were we replacing?
Ed Options.
Ed Options. And I know why we had to go away from Penn Foster and Ed Options, I think it was the best of not many great solutions. Are we, we're making improvement, it sounds like, with this?
Correct, yes. And this would be a, I'm not sure exactly how they do it, but it is approved through the state, but it would be a Florida diploma, and if we, if there are certain things that we can do that potentially could even be a Citrus County diploma.
Wow. Excellent.
So my question is, I mean, this is a $163,000 contract, and I'm looking at this in five minutes, so how did we get to this point? I mean, why couldn't, why wasn't this on the agenda? Can you explain that to me again, please?
Well.
Here's what happened. They set the contract with Mr. Bradshaw, and then this morning we realized it wasn't on the agenda, because we need to afford that, because this is really nothing new that we're doing in the district, it's something that will replace in three, four of the programs with it. So Mr. Bradshaw said that he had looked at it earlier, he said he felt like he had looked at it, and that's why we put it on there, so that we can go ahead out, get the contract settled, and get Edgenuity come in and help start them in some training. So it was really no, we just felt like that we could go ahead and bring it, because like I said, it's not new to us, it's just replacing, currently what we're doing is kind of apples to apples.
And so the Play-Doh and the Ed Options are what's being replaced?
Correct.
And the teachers, you have had a good response from the teachers?
Yes, all the people that run the labs that have these products set in a room and went through an afternoon of training, they got to put their hands on the product, and they all, did not hear from, didn't hear from anyone that did not like the product better. I mean, changing a product, anytime you change, there's always that little bit of apprehension, but as far as the product goes, they liked the product.
And even though it's a $160,000 contract, and I get that, it's still a $70,000 savings for the program for the bus.
In the same service, basically the same service is being provided for less than a month.
But how long did the teachers look at it and have time to work with it?
They had an afternoon training, but they also were given an access code that they could go back in at each school, so they could go back in and look at it in more depth.
Or several weeks or?
Well, they still have access to it now, so that occurred back in March, it was either February or March.
Yes, we actually went and spoke to the Department of APs at all the schools, and spoke to them about the pros and cons of it initially.
Yeah.
Got their feedback, and then we brought the gentleman, his name's Greg, came back in, and we did a presentation at some high school, all the high schools sent their staff in, and we went over it, and then we looked through all of the different aspects of the Giant Academy, which is replacing Ed Options, and the Play-Doh, which is the credit recovery piece for both.
Yes. So we're saving $70,000.
Correct.
I like that.
There wouldn't be any interruption with the students that are in these current programs that we're replacing, basically their credits are already in their transcripts, so.
Correct, this is a, you know, credit recovery, like if you fail a certain subject you need for graduation, at least the course recovery option, those go in the transcript automatically, so there's no, no conflict there.
We will finish the year with Play-Doh, and we'll finish the year with Ed Options.
Sometimes you're giving those kids a couple days. Sometimes you're giving those kids a couple of days after the end of the school year to finish Play-Doh. Are we still doing that?
Yes, ma'am. I will not upload the transcripts to Ed Options until after our Razor final lines.
Okay.
And then the, my official end date for Play-Doh is the July 1st as well as the March 3rd is the 15th.
And when does the contract expire with Play-Doh? Or is there going to be a reimbursement of monies that we signed the contract with them that goes past the 15th?
Well, actually, the contract is in the 30th of June when we enter the contract. We had to just set an arbitrary date. We said the 15th day would actually have access. But none of the schools access Play-Doh during the summer. Only one that doesn't draw is the South Street during the summer.
Okay.
So if they wanted to access it till the end of June, it would be available for them.
All right, and this program will start on June 1st? This program will start for next school year? So when our kids come back? Contract start date is June 1st, but, oh, so they wouldn't, I got you, wouldn't...
We don't have any kids then.
We don't have any kids then.
Yes.
Program could be made available to staff to...
The second part that I wanted to review is the Educational and Technology Services Agreement. And if you will go to the fifth page in, which is actually page number four, which actually has the dollar figures on that chart. This is a virtual school option for our Citrus County students. Right now, our virtual students go through Florida Virtual. And anytime they take a course into Florida Virtual, we lose all the FTE. Whether they take full-time FLVS, we lose all that FTE. If they take one course, we lose that percentage of FTE. With this agreement with Edgenuity, students, it's pretty much the same process. We're signing a contract with Edgenuity in which the student can take a course. And the course costs us $225. And we get reimbursed FTE of 400 and roughly $433. So right now, if a student takes that with FLVS, we lose all of that $433. Through this option, through this company, we pay that company $225 and we would retain the remainder of that FTE. A full-time student with this company, if they went for a semester, would be $1750. If they go year-round, obviously you just double that figure to $3,500. Right now, full-time FLVS students, we lose all that FTE. The FTE is $5,200. So with this contract, when a student takes this course, if they take it for a year, we pay the company $3,500 and we retain the $5,200 in FTE.
$3,500 per student?
Per student, if they go full-time.
Got it.
And some of those students who do homeschool through FLVS, they may say, well, since our local school system offers this full-time option, we may just sign up and go through our school system. So this is, we do not put any money out until a student takes a course. And we have a certain timeframe that we can monitor their progress. And if they're not making progress, we withdraw them. And we don't pay any money until they've reached the 20% mark in the course. So this is, there's not going to be any money out of our pocket upfront. It's just ultimately, when FTE comes back, we will retain a portion of those dollars. Same way, what's going to hap, and that's part of the urgency is, is we get this information out or we sign this contract, hopefully this company will set up a portal for us, an internet portal. And just like students go to the Florida Virtual portal to sign up, they will go to this portal for Citrus County Virtual Schools and sign up. And then the information, just like FLVS, goes to the counselor. The counselor approves it or not approves it based on what that student's needs academically. And then once it's approved, they will begin the course work. But it's pretty much identical to the FLVS process. This process also has a full-time 24-hour tutor that students can call at any time if they're struggling with the work. So that's an option that FLVS does not have. And there's good reviews. We checked in a lot of people. Again, they work closely with the state. They meet all the audit requirements for FLV, or for virtual companies. So again, this one's not going to cost us any money upfront. It's just going to be, and potentially right now, we have 1,000 students a year take one course on FLVS. So if you do the math, that 1,000 students, and I think I have it here, if you do... You know, we're actually, we'd be saving about, I have to redo, I'm sorry. It would be another about $200,000. 1,000 students take this course, take a course per year, you know, do the math, $225 from $433 and then multiply that times 1,000, it's about $208 a student, about $208,000. We're not going to get all the students to take a course the first year through this portal or through Citrus County Virtual. It'll take a while for the word to get out and students to get comfortable with it. But as we get more and more students take this, we will retain some of our FTE.
Mr. Rowland, you have, we've had the Seminole County that we've been doing Seminole Virtual. Is this going to replace them or is this going to be in addition to?
Right now, because of timing, let me step back. This contract right here is six through 12. It's not K-12. We have another option we're going to bring at a later board meeting that would be K-5 that would potentially replace Seminole Virtual.
So Seminole, at the very least, would be needed for, to meet K through 5, at least for the moment.
Correct. And we only have three students, three to five students in Seminole Virtual right now.
And this would, again, it meets the requirements that we need you to have to be able to provide that without having to send them all to Florida Virtual as well as, now, we've been offering the media course upstairs. We have, I know in Ed Services, we've got a teacher that teaches the social media for a lot of our students so that we've been able to do this. She must be using a different product then.
Actually, on this sheet here also, if you look down, Course Only Fee.
Right.
With our teachers, currently, we pay Florida Virtual $50 a student for this course and her salary as well. With the Edgenuity company, they offer the similar course, they're going to give it to us for $25 a course. And this is all through the bundling process is why they're giving us discounts. So that's going to save us additional money as well.
Mr. Dobbins?
Yes, you made a point on this page on Attachment D to say that we were going to be paying $3,600, I believe, and getting the FTE of $5,400. But I can't do the math to come up with the $3,600. How do we figure that out?
$3,500 is what I said. If you do the $1750 per semester and then two semesters, it would be $3,500.
Okay, and the $225 per semester, then that didn't include that in?
That, when you take a semester course, if a student takes a semester course, we pay that company $225. The FTE on that student is roughly $433. So we will retain that $433, but we will pay that company $225. So, you know, roughly on that math, what is that, $170 a student that we will retain in FTE. And again, we have 1,000 students by the end of the school year that will have taken at least one course through FLVS. This will just now be an option for our students. They can take it through this company, which is a good product. They have a 24-hour tutor. Then we can retain some of our FTE.
So $170 savings times 1,000 is $170,000. Is that what you're saying, basically?
If every one of those students... $208, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's $208. If every student that took an FLVS course, which is not going to happen, if every one of those students took a course through us instead of FLVS, yes, that would be $208,000. But we know this...
That's not going to happen.
That's not going to happen. This first year, we're going to, but we don't pay any money unless a student takes it past 20%.
20% of those kids did. It's still money that they're making as revenue sources.
Right.
Also, with the full-time students, when they go to FLVS, we still often provide services that we don't get reimbursed for. In a situation like this, when we are providing those services, there at least would be clearly some compensation that they will have. And I'm not just, I mean, we're not just talking about sports. We have, you know, FSA testing. We have, you know, ESE services at times. So that's been a little bit of our frustration with those that go to Florida Virtual because, you know, we lose the FTE altogether. So I'm...
Do we have a motion?
I move, where is it, by the way?
It's not on there.
Okay, so I move that we accept the agreement for Educational and Technical Services with, I want to see. Who is it with?
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity, if that's it, and Citrus County School Board.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and second by Ms. Howard. Do we have any further questions or comments?
I have a comment. I'm just trying to, when I look at the first clue block, it says Edgenuity Instructional Services of Florida Virtual Instruction Provider. And we might confuse it. We're trying to get these people to recognize Edgenuity in that portal for their classes. Could we kind of minimize Florida Virtual Instruction Provider? Because I'm sure they're going to confuse that with FLVS. It says Florida Virtual. Yeah. No, I understand what they're saying, but I don't want our kids to get confused.
When we do the advertising inside of the portal, we'll make sure that it's not confusing to this group.
We'll make the portal indicative to Citrus County. We have a lot of control over how it's going to be.
Okay, so impact for teachers on the Florida Virtual School. Now, social media, as Kennedy spoke about. I know you asked that question, but I'm not sure if I understood the answer. Is there, is this person going to teach through it?
Right now, we offer a social media course to our students. And Ms. Deb Dumas is our teacher that does that. She, it's called the Blending Model. She goes to all three high schools. We buy a product from Florida Virtual that costs us $48 for that coursework. That helps her provide that course to online. What we're going to do now is buy that coursework from this Edgenuity company instead of Florida Virtual. Edgenuity is going to charge us $25 for that product instead of $48.
So is she the only teacher in the district that was impacted by this?
Correct. And she's been a part of this entire process of reviewing the courses. And she's actually been in our conversation before we, the staff development people and the salespeople. We've actually been, and I know it may not seem like, but we've actually been investigating for this for about a year and a half. We almost brought it to the board last year, but because we weren't 100% certain and we wanted to talk to more companies. So we have talked to three or four different providers of virtual instruction. And through doing all of our research and talking and fully exploring everything and having Mr. Blocker and other folks involved in it, that's why we've come to this conclusion. It's just the timing, the timing got off or it would have been on the agenda. And I apologize for bringing it in late to the game, but it's something that almost couldn't be helped. But we've really taken a lot of time to review this product to make sure that it's going to work for Citrus County. And, you know, for our students, staff and, you know, our taxpayers and saving us a few dollars.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions or comments? All is in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Bradshaw? Great. Mr. Mellon, do you have anything for Ms. Howard?
Yes, always. Always you do. We have a very easy conversation with you.
One, you were in your seventh grade or at the...
Yes, yeah. I see you're 48, judging by Saturday.
And we were, you're... You left all the... You told us there's a... Judging for... And I wish to... One, this guy was judging many. I'm telling you, he started talking, we talked and I was like, dude, you're a different one.
Yep.
We were like, sure. It was so, the words were so big. Even when he was talking, I was like, I'll be over there. He said, we're not out of it. But he, you know, for a while, we understood that for a while. Still didn't have the basics of it. Maybe he did ask a couple of questions, but we got off. But I had never heard of... Talking that way. Back when we were talking about, she was then used to... Two different organizations, corporations, governments together and now we judge each other. I would wish she... In fact, he probably asked all of us to leave. We didn't talk together. It was a great experience. Second thing, just want to, when the IB comes back, that we had some banquet and for the children who were up there. One thing, like, two IBs, they're educational and study. But the children, one had to give a sense of what they're seeing in these is most of all to be a better... And I was like, oh, I'm sorry. And that she was going, I think that most of them applied to us in Florida and some of them in South Florida. But a lot of you, there's, we're sending these students, pushing over the IB to the test. It was like, um, the IB testing is the same across the world. So the students, in the first year, in the second year, it has sent in as the, your... So it's the same answer, it's open to the school.
Right.
And also the students are prepared, thanking their parents for the involvement and support of all of us. So just for the kind of example, we're all good with the days. Our parents, it's very, very nice.
All right, Ms. Council?
I got to score the juniors and thank God they're only talking about horses and sheep. Cute little bunnies and things like that.
You communicate with them.
Yeah, we communicate with them. One of the best, who's speaking, he said it was his first time in the Citrus County. That was really good. And then scooted from there to board grade service over at the position. He has a very nice article today. I'm sure he's looking down on us and saying, I didn't have that many. People love me. But then went to Take Stop the Children scholarship like that. I was glad, one of the five girls was my 10th grade student. Awesome. But I think, and I was glad that they were saying it because it was, this child signed up for her Take Stop, but she was a seventh grader at Christopher Middle School. And she, so she committed to six years of almost heart labor and somebody was leaning over her shoulder to see if she could miss a step. But she has already been accepted for it. Wow. There you go.
Mr. Dobbins knows a little bit about part of Southern.
Mr. Kennedy?
Um, you know, the Good Stuff had a couple of side meetings, which I always loved, the end of the year ones. And then we had our Educational Technology Council with Dr. Gettys. Just a quick side note, you know, those guys, they are just the most talented geeks that you're going to find.
Yes, they are.
There was so many Dr. Gettys brought in to show a new product or what they thought was a new product. And they showed this package would end up costing like $350 a unit. Well, while the presentation was going on, they had already emailed each other how they could get it done for about $75 a student and do a better job with better products. So it's, we get, you know, we really save and grow as a community in this county because of those guys. There was a great article today about the Prado Group that does family nights at our McDonald's. It was on Monday, I apologize. And, you know, we are so blessed to have community involvement and have businesses that get back to our community. So if you haven't read that article, I looked that out. And now to some of the more difficult stuff. Legislative session, as we all know, ended yesterday. I was sitting in to Take Stop and the SAC meetings, watching it and having, you know, principals and teachers and family members around asking where's it, things going? And staff members that were texting me trying to find out where things are at. There are some things we need to really be aware of. And I think some of the biggest differences, we talked about this best and brightest, is going to have a 500% increase in its funding, going from $49 million to over $214 million. There's just something that's interesting in it. It will now allow principals to be able... It will now allow principals to be able to, you know, be a part of the Best and Brightest, but it is not allowing assistant principals. And I will tell you that in speaking with one of our principals, they made the comment that if our, if my AP is not permitted to get it, then I'm not going to try and get it, because everything I am is a result of the work. They're just going to add 20 new minutes to a day. Because again, they're taking nothing away. So, when they could have just repealed the requirement for structured physical activity, or what we call SPA in the schools, they added this on top of that. I will tell you, and this is a personal one for me, that while it's a great thing, I'm going to struggle with the next thing that I'm going to bring up. But my PE waiver, after almost four years of trying, it did pass. It passed both the House and the Senate in that bill, unfortunately. That was very calculated, it seems like. There was a, that entire bill was crafted and peppered to make sure that there was very carefully placed things that were positive and that people wanted as that took place. I want to say that there's a couple of people we need to lift out because they, yesterday, they stood up for kids and for schools. And they have been, they have, and they probably continue to bear the brunt of this in the legislature. Obviously, Senator Bill Mumford, he did an amazing job on the floor. But if I were going to give away, as we have, and I know I can say this with some of the people in the audience, a Golden Heart Award for yesterday, I would be giving that to Senator David Simmons. Because Senator Simmons had to stand on the floor of the Senate and present HB 7069, answer questions on it, actually, to some extent, defend it. And in the end, Senator asked the entire Senate for them to vote their conscience. And that man voted his conscience, and he turned against the party leaders. And he voted against it along with three other senators, Grimsley and Garcia. If you haven't sent those three senators a note, I would really encourage you to send them a note and thank them for standing up for kids, because they are having to do it in a difficult time. The biggest concern that we are going to face in that bill is Title I. Because it is removing the local control of the district, placing it now on a group that is not really requesting it, and that is the principals. And we have now at risk things like summer school, which is a district-funded issue. We have programs such as Success Maker, which has been vital to some of our scoring and success. We have a number of programs equalling about 24% of our Title I budget that we fund through district initiatives that the state law would now say has to go down to 8%. And if we were just to, out of that, take out the administrative costs of our staff alone, we're going to have to reach into our general budget in order to make whole the funding to Title I. The other thing it's going to do is it's going to move Title I to the high school. And while that, some may say, "Well, that's what's wrong with that." Well, the high school receives other funding. But our, that's going to, that money will go to the high school at the detriment of our middle schools and elementary schools. So, this bill has not been good for education. It was, I thought, very inappropriately passed. Many of the things were not, never made it through committees. In fact, on one side of the aisle, they were, they failed and were died, you know, an easy death. But with that, it voted in the Senate of a 20 to 18 margin, which meant one senator, if just one more senator had voted, or if they just decided not to come and go to the restroom, they could have, we would have been in a different situation. It's now been sent to the governor. And there's a number of groups already that are coming out asking the governor to do two things, to veto HB 7069 and to veto the budget. For those of us that we don't recall, the governor only has line item veto on the budget items. What they don't have is line item veto in bills. So, HB 7069, which has some very positive things in it, unfortunately, he can't take those and selectively decide which ones are good and which ones are bad. So, that's, those are pieces in it. HB 7069, I think that we generally determine using, and this is how we determined it, using what the Senate runs were going to be for Citrus County, which did not include funding Pope schools or the Best and Brightest, which is basically the bulk of the funding in 7069. Citrus County would be receiving about $2 million more in the budget. So, as a result of that, we are going to be losing about $2 million. And let me just say something about School of Hope's too. We absolutely all agree that there needs to be something done with any school that's a D R F school. Thank goodness we live in Citrus County and we govern in Citrus County, where that is not an issue that we face. But we face it because we make positive decisions every day in our classrooms and in our budgets to make sure that they are making a difference in students' lives. That means about $1 million to fund that program in the state is going to come out of Citrus County or would have come to Citrus County. That means that our students and our programs could be affected because of money that we're going to send somewhere else. And by the way, because it will be related to charters, there are things that they are not going to have to do. They're not going to have to abide by the recess law requirement. They're not going to have to abide by school, they can go by school averaging for their attendance to meet classroom size. They will also be able to hire non-certified teachers in some cases and not have to have them meet all of the professional development requirements that are in 7069. And the list goes on. So, as a result of that, many organizations, including Florida Educational Association, has already put out today that they are asking the governor to veto this. I believe, from what I understand, Florida School Board Association, as well as the superintendents, are in discussions to get right now that message out to us. So, I think this board is at a crossroads to say, are we going to send a letter either individually? And if it's individually, that's what we do. Or as a board, asking the governor and giving the governor support to veto this? I think he has indicated in some things today, and I will just read this because I do think it was important that he did say this. The governor said earlier today, he said, "Last night, the Florida Legislature passed a budget that was done largely behind closed doors. It was done without important input from the public and many members of the legislature who were elected by Floridians to serve them. That's unfortunate." He says, "I ran as a governor to fight career politicians and its background deals like this that make families think politics is nothing more than a game. I am beginning to review the budget, and I have the option to veto the entire budget or vetoing the line items. Just like every year, I will make my decision based on what's best for families, because my job is to wake up every morning and fight for Floridians." I think that, you know, I would suggest that if we all want to, if we want to write individually letters, that's fine. But if we also want to stand as a board, I am more than willing to stand with you all in sending a letter to the governor. And if that's the case, I would then suggest that we authorize our chairperson to write a letter and then send it out to the governor on our behalf. And with that, I will yield. School of Hope's also can have five years to turn around a school where our public schools are even two years.
Okay. We'll get started on that. Mr. Bradshaw?
Is there consensus on that? I just want to make sure, I don't want to be, you know... I think we've, and just for clarification, I think as a board, because Mr. Bradshaw's done this before, we can't all sign it unless we brought it back to us. We need it, we need that sent exponentially. Otherwise, if we were to see it and sign it, he's explained to us that there's a sunshine issue. So, we would have to authorize the chairperson to write it on behalf of the Citrus County School Board. So, just, I'm only saying that just so, because I would sign it as well, but I think for time... She can, yes, she can add our names to that, yes, sir.
Well, I'll stay in line with the legislative update. Mr. Kennedy, thank you for that information. You know, I am a little disappointed to understand FSBA conference issue that we're dealing with, with the money issue. And I would like to be there to hear the legislative update because there's still another step here in the process with the governor. So, a lot of things could still change. But it's good to have that information at the first part of the summer as we look down the road. I know that's the same, I think you're in the same boat too, or resemble it with that. So, my question would be, is there a way we could get Chris Doolin or someone from the organization to come here to brief us? I haven't heard exactly, other than I know, I have said that, you know, if we can't get the block of rooms, I would not be going because of the cost issue. So, I didn't know what our options are and how we are going to go and what we thought as a board we should do.
Sometimes the state will give legislative updates for staff, and I know you'll be included, but we could certainly, I can keep, for a certain association, that someone come down for the legislative update once everyone's signed. If we all choose not to go, we can.
And as long as the price is where it is, I'm not going to go either. But I did speak with Ms. Verdi today, and FSBA has our names on the list. And if people want to drop out, they'll put us in. Who knows, who knows whether they'll have or not?
And I'll be out of town, so I won't be going as well. So, certainly, it all works and it works out.
Well, didn't Mr. Doolin come here, he came here with...
Not the legislative update, he came... And he's, he's good on small county, but he's not going to be, he's been great with giving us information this legislative session. But I think usually Sam's been able to get us somebody who's going to know somebody from the documents. We also can do it virtually. If we find that's more or less expensive, we can certainly put them up on the screen and we can work it where we can have interactive, if that becomes a thing.
Okay. I would like to say I've been out around, quite a bit here the last couple of weeks. I know the rest of you have too. I wasn't able to go to Take Stock in Children because I was at the project graduation meeting that we're having for Citrus High School, trying to get that program going. Parents that are working on project graduation at Citrus High School. I was at Citrus Springs Elementary School last week, forced to teach appreciation, staff appreciation a week. And I got to see, you know, our schools in action at a couple of other locations. We're definitely very appreciative for our teachers, our staff members, all our employees, and their dedication. So, that was nice to see those events going on. I was out at Marine Science Station, spent the day out there and went over to AES and visited there. So, that was good to see those programs and to be out with the kids there at the Marine Science Station. This is Hurricane Prepared this week. And I spoke to our Mercy Management Director, David Carlo, in regards to, you know, what he is doing with, you know, as he prepares the county for hurricane season. And he gave a good report to me. I know we've been doing, we just had a drill, I guess. And I know that the schools are very much a part of the plan. If there were to be a disaster that were to come through the county, the shelters that we offer and the special needs shelter, the animal shelters, all those things were a great part of it. And he had said that he has very much confidence in the school district. It's him, I'm sure you are aware, because you have your people and the Miss Cerrages there at those meetings, and Mr. Wagner. But, you know, there's a lot of things that could take place if we had to open up a shelter. And of course, there's also issues that deal with the aftermath and getting schools up and running. But I know there's contingency plans in place and things that they have Dave addressed. So, I'm glad to know the district is involved with that. You know, I would remind our public that, you know, when the shelters are open and those schools that we use for shelters, you know, that sex offenders, registered sex offenders don't go to the shelters, they go to the county jail. That's where the shelter is for sex offenders. But we don't want to let our guard down. You know, we don't know what the season holds, but certainly, we want to be ready for hurricane season. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And thank you again for taking care of me when I was sick. All of you have stepped in, and I do appreciate it, I truly do. And I'm almost back to normal, but I wouldn't swear to it. Want to let you know that tomorrow's up for battle again. I think it's the last one of the year. I plan on being there, if God is willing. I have a... We've got a meeting here at 10 o'clock on the 17th, is that correct? And then we've got another meeting here at 9 o'clock on the 22nd. Okay? I just don't want to forget those meetings. So, you've had a little from Mr. Bradshaw.
That's a hearing as well.
Thursday night at 6:30 is the high school awards ceremony. And then the next Thursday, it's the office of cantors. And Friday, the 18th, is Chris' graduation ceremony.
The 22nd, for some reason, I didn't have it in my, I had it, but I didn't have to get the time in the...
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, okay.
I think that's something, but I don't know why. I know we've got WTC that night at Chris Peterson.
On the 22nd? Yes.
Yes, we do. That's the 26th, that's eight.
And micro school.
Graduation is that evening at 6:00. Do you have anything else that you could mention?
I just want to add my thing that Tom brought up about Best and Brightest. I don't think you're all aware of this, but it's our understanding that the highly effective teacher would get $1,000, and the effective teacher can get $800 if there's any money left. So, the money they send us will be based on however they, what magic formula they come up with. So, I just emailed everyone of you on this, of all the senators and representatives who wrote a note yesterday on the bill. So, if you feel it in your heart, just send each one of them a thank you note. I think I agree with you, Thomas, Senator Mumford's been there the whole time, but Senator Simmons put himself out last night. And Senator Lee also made a few comments about the process, so...
Yeah, he's been, he's been another one, he's been a friend of ours.
And I think it'd be nice if they worked on one of these. About the process, so...
Yeah, he's been, he's been another one, he's been a friend of ours.
And I think it'd be nice if they worked on one of these.